Good evening. Welcome to the December 20th meeting of the Oceanside City Council. Lots of really great things going on tonight, i.e. the employee awards recognition for all the employees. You can see a lot of folks standing here because of all the employees that we're going to be honoring this evening. But I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and start off with a roll call. Mr. Navarro?
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim. Councilmember Joyce.
Present.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Here.
Thank you. Please rise, please stand for the invocation. Tonight, we have Pastor Logi Voah Faasa giving us the invocation. Pastor Logi, welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor. Let's all close our eyes as we enter these courts with a word of prayer this morning, this afternoon. Almighty God, Triune God, we give you thanks and praise for all your mighty works. You are loving and good and gracious. Thank you for creating us and sustaining us day by day. Thank you that you made us in your image to exist in a community with other people. We thank you for our city. Thank you for our elected officials, the businesses, the churches, the families, and the individuals that makes our city the great place that it is. For Lord, we acknowledge that we do not deserve this good gift. We are not worthy of your favor, for we have sinned against you in thoughts and in words and in deed. We do things that we should not do, and we don't do things that we should do. We have not loved you with our whole hearts, and we have not loved our neighbors as ourselves. We appeal to the Lamb of God, Jesus Christ, who died for our sins. Forgive us and give us hearts of obedience to your Holy Spirit. We thank you that Jesus rose from the dead and now reigns as the King over heaven and earth. Grant that our city would be known as a righteous city, a city that confesses Jesus as Lord, a city of peace and hope, a city with happy homes, a city that welcomes the stranger, a city that cares for the needy, a city that defends the innocent from evil doers. Lord, we thank you for our silver government. Those who bear the sword do so as your minister to be a heralded crime. I pray that our silver servants would acknowledge this calling and perform it faithfully, be with our judges, our attorneys, and our law enforcement. Grant that they would never neglect and abuse the authority, but they would stand firm for the truth and justice. Keep them safe from harm as they serve our community. I pray for this council meeting tonight. Give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefits and for your glory. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Logi. Please remain standing and join me. Pledge allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. And tonight, we begin with our employee service awards. And I'm going to ask the directors to join me here in the well, as well as council members, as we are taking through the name of each employee that we are honoring tonight. And then to end with some kind, maybe some sad goodbyes for four wonderful employees that are retiring, leaving us after so many years, so many wonderful, wonderful years of their service.
Hi, good evening. I'm Alma Sanchez with HR Department. Again, good evening, Mayor Sanchez, council members, department directors, and audience. It's with great pleasure that we present to you tonight employees who have reached the praiseworthy accomplishment of 20, 25, and 35 years of service with the city of Oceanside. When your name is called, please come forward. Adam Davidson.
Yeah!
Adam was hired October 6, 2003, as a Parking Enforcement Officer 1 in the Public Works Department. Adam has devoted his entire career to parking enforcement and currently serves as Parking Enforcement Officer 2. Adam has been instrumental in working with the latest parking technology. His willingness to offer training and assistance to parking staff with this technology is noticed and greatly appreciated. Adam has been an essential part of the team, consistently prepared to help, which in turn promotes a positive workplace environment. Thank you, Adam, for your hard work and dedication. Jonathan Perkins. We have Jonathan Perkins now.[445.81][445.81](applause) Jonathan was hired September 8, 2003, as a Maintenance Worker 1 in the Public Works Department, Harbor and Beaches Division. He has held several positions before promoting to his current role of Maintenance Specialist. Jonathan holds an Agricultural Pest Control Advisor license, is a certified journeyman plumber, and recently completed the Certified Marina Operator course. Thank you for your service and commitment to both the department and the community. Join me congratulating Jonathan Perkins for 20 years of service.[484.12][484.12](applause) Next, we have Torino Valdovinos.[497.78][497.78](applause) Torino began his career with the City of Oceanside Police Department on April 7, 2003, as a Police Officer recruit. Torino has served the community as a Police Officer, Police Sergeant, Police Lieutenant, and currently serves as a Police Captain. As a Police Captain, Torino oversees the Support Operations Division and manages the Oceanside Youth Partnership Program that mentors at-risk youth. Effective December 24, Torino will be the newly appointed Assistant Police Chief.[536.66][536.66](applause) Thank you, Torino. Next, we have Dolores Alvarez.[550.41][550.41](applause) Dolores was hired October 6, 1998, as a Code Enforcement Officer 1 in the Neighborhood Services Department. Dolores currently serves as Senior Code Enforcement Officer. She is certified as a Code Enforcement Officer with the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers. Dolores not only is dedicated to her position, but also gives up her time to volunteering within the community and has been recognized with many community awards. Okay, next, we have Darren Eaton.[650.62][650.62](applause) Darren began employment with the City of Oceanside on December 7, 1998, as a Programmer, Analyst, and Information Technologies. In July 2002, promoted to Information Systems Analyst 3, and later promoted to Information Systems Analyst 4, position he currently holds. Help me congratulate Darren for 25 years of dedicated service to the city of Oceanside.[680.01][680.01](applause) Next, we have Michael Heiser.[716.12][716.12](applause) Michael started with the city on November 16, 1998, as a Maintenance Worker 1 in Water Utilities Sewer Division. Michael later promoted to Utility Worker and currently serves as Utility Worker 3. Mike currently holds a Grade 4 Collection Certificate and a Mechanical Technologist Grade 2 Certificate through the Water, I'm sorry, California Water and Environment Association. Okay, next, we have David Ria.[782.12][782.12](applause) David was hired as a Computer Systems Specialist on December 7, 1998, in the IT Division. From 2002 until 2004, he held the positions of Information Systems Analyst 2, Information Systems Analyst 3, and Information Systems Analyst 4. In July 2006, David promoted to Senior Information Technology Analyst and held that position for 14 years. He was then promoted to his current position of Information Technologies Division Manager in May of 2018. Please help me congratulate David for 25 years of dedicated service.[825.88][825.88](applause) And lastly, we will acknowledge 35 years of service, Kisa Machado.[856.32][856.32](applause) Kisa began her career with the City of Oceanside on September 11, 1988, as a Housing Technician in the Neighborhood Services Department. She then became a Housing Specialist in October 1994. Kisa has now been the Supervising Housing Specialist since June 2014. Kisa has not only served the department, but also countless members of our community in helping them find safe and affordable housing. Join me congratulating Kisa for 35 years of dedication to the city of Oceanside.[897.23][897.23](applause) And last, Brian Steubert.[909.82][909.82](applause) Brian began working for the City of Oceanside on December 11, 1988, as a Maintenance Worker 1 in the Public Works Department Parks Division. In 1999, he was promoted to Maintenance Worker 2 and was a Street Sweeper Operator. Brian has worked in streets and traffic sections of Public Works and currently serves as Maintenance Supervisor overseeing street sweeping, solid waste, and closed landfill programs for Public Works. Join me congratulating Brian for 35 years of dedication to the city of Oceanside.[947.73][947.73](applause) That concludes tonight's Service Awards. On behalf of the City of Oceanside, congratulations to everyone recognized this evening.[970.51][970.51](applause)
Well, that was pretty fantastic. Well, we're not done yet. We've got some special recognitions. First of all, proclamation in honor of OPD Assistant Chief Shawn Marshon on his retirement.[998.01][998.01](applause) And Chief, you're coming down here too, right? Yeah.[1009.01][1009.01](laughter) Wow. Ready? Well, this is kind of a bittersweet, because I've known, well, currently Assistant Police Chief Shawn Marshon till the end of the month, maybe?
Uh, Friday.
Friday. Okay, Friday's his last day. And he has been everywhere, in the neighborhoods, everywhere, and I, this is very, very special. Whereas Assistant Police Chief Shawn Marshon was hired by the Oceanside Police Department and started the police academy on January 7, 1997, thereafter being sworn as a Police Officer on July 27, 1997. And whereas Assistant Chief Marshon was selected as a detective for the Investigations Division Special Enforcement Section gangs in December 2003, and promoted to Police Sergeant in July 2006. And whereas Assistant Chief Marshon was selected as Sergeant of Investigations Division Special Enforcement Section in April 2011, promoted to Police Lieutenant in October 2011, promoted to Police Captain in July 2015, and then finally ending his career as Assistant Police Chief in April 2023. And whereas Assistant Chief Marshon served as Field Training Officer from January 2000 to December 2003, Drug Recognition Expert from August 2000 through June 2002, Drug Recognition Expert Instructor, I mean, he had to teach, right, from June 2002 through June 2005, SWAT Team Operator from January 2003 through July 2006, SWAT Team Leader from September 2007 through October 2011, Emergency Planning from October 2011 through January 2013, SWAT Executive Officer from October 2011 through January 2014, and SWAT Commander in January 2014 through July 2015. And whereas Assistant Chief Marshon received his Bachelor of Arts in Public Administration from San Diego State University in 2005, thereafter receiving his Master of Arts degree in Public Administration from San Diego State University in 2012. And whereas Assistant Chief Marshon graduated from the Sherman Block Supervisory Leadership Institute in 2010, Class 279, the FBI National Academy in 2013, Class 252, and the Police Executive Research Forum Senior Management Institute for Police in 2019. Busy guy, right? Always striving for excellence. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby acknowledge and congratulate Assistant Police Chief Shawn Marshon on his many years of outstanding commitment to the City of Oceanside and for his phenomenal legacy of service, excellence, and professionalism. Thank you and best wishes.[1206.75][1206.75](applause)
Five words, let's talk. Okay, that wasn't expected. I got ambushed again for the proclamation. Let me make that the start. It has been a pleasure to serve this community and be a part of this community for the entirety of my career. This place has been a gift to me and my family, and it's just a good time for me personally to move on. It is an exceptional organization, not just the police department, but the city at large. And it kind of, it's a little bit of a heartbreak to leave when we're seeing such a good push forward across the board, but I've already said it once today, I'll be cheering everybody on from the chief seats. I can't wait to see what happens.[1265.08][1265.08](applause)
Thank you.[1267.08][1267.08](applause) Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Now, we have three folks from Oceanside Fire Department. Chief, come on down. And first, we're going to start with Deputy Chief Pete Lawrence on his retirement. Come on down.[1286.08][1286.08](applause) Wow, this is hard too. I mean, they're all going to be hard, right? Whereas Deputy Fire Chief Peter Lawrence has over 42 years of fire service experience and holds a Chief Fire Officer designation by the Center for Public Safety Excellence. And whereas Deputy Chief Lawrence has worked 34 years for the City of Oceanside Fire Department, serving in several roles: Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, Administrative Services Officer running emergency medical services, Division Chief of Fire Training, Suppression Battalion Chief, Division Chief of Fire Administration, and he ends his career as Deputy Fire Chief. And whereas Deputy Chief Lawrence served for over 25 years as a member of a federal incident management team assigned to large wildland fires across the country. And whereas Deputy Chief Lawrence became a nationally recognized expert in the ambulance billing process and assisted many other organizations with his knowledge. And whereas Deputy Chief Lawrence managed all aspects of the radio communications program for the city of Oceanside and provided subject matter expertise to the county for 20 years. And whereas Deputy Chief Lawrence presented at conferences across the country on EMS, reimbursements, wildland fire, radiology, emergency preparedness. And whereas Deputy Chief Lawrence authorized articles for fire, authored, excuse me, authored articles for Fire Chief Journal of EMS International Association of Fire Chiefs. And whereas, in a testament to his impact, Deputy Chief Lawrence was awarded an IAFC Meritorious Service Award 2011 and the James O. Page EMS Achievement Award in 2007. And whereas, in a capstone to his career, Deputy Chief Lawrence just completed service to a Federal Congressional Committee on EMS Ground Ambulance Rate Setting and Rulemaking, representing fire service EMS for the entire country. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby acknowledge and congratulate Deputy Fire Chief Peter Lawrence on his many years of outstanding commitment to the City of Oceanside and for his phenomenal legacy of service, excellence, and professionalism. Thank you and best wishes.[1426.71][1426.71](applause)
Well, I've been absolutely honored to work for the City of Oceanside, and I've been very fortunate to have worked in the Fire Department. This is a phenomenal city. We've got great staff. I'd also like to just thank the elected officials who put themselves out there all the time. They sit here at the council meetings, they get this city running, and they take abuse sometimes. I don't know how they do it, and I want to appreciate it. I was a political science major. This is representative democracy, and they have allowed me to do my job, and they have given me opportunities, and they've made this city great. So, keep going, staff. This city is in a wonderful position. It continues to rise. The Fire Department is in a phenomenal spot. Our staff in the city and the staff in the Fire Department are second to none. And with that, keep going, and it's been an absolute honor and a privilege to have spent all this time with the city, watch it grow, and leave it in such grand hands.[1490.08][1490.08](applause)
Thank you. Would you like Michelle to come? Michelle? Michelle, come on down. And she wants you to make sure you don't have any accidents before the 28th, which is, 28th is your last day. So, no accidents. Look where you're stepping and stuff.[1502.13][1502.13](laughter) Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Oh, wait, wait. Actually, one more. Yes. How could I forget? It's big and a little heavy. On behalf of our Assemblywoman for the 74th District, Lori Davies, there's also a certificate of recognition presented to Peter Lawrence, Oceanside Fire Deputy Chief. Congratulations on your retirement. Your exemplary performance and dedication have set a standard for others to follow. Your service has not only enhanced the safety of Oceanside, but has also positively impacted the lives of those you have sworn to protect. I extend my deepest gratitude for your service and best wishes for a fulfilling and rewarding retirement.[1542.41][1542.41](applause) One more.
Oh, one more? Okay. Here you go. Thank you, Mayor. Sure. So, good evening. My name is Salome Tash. I'm here on behalf of Congressman Mike Levin, and I'm here to present you with a certificate of special congressional recognition on your retirement. In honor of your accomplished 42-year career in the fire service, thank you for your dedication to the city of Oceanside and to keeping our community safe. Your leadership is greatly appreciated, and we just want to congratulate you and wish you all the best. Congratulations.[1575.11][1575.11](applause)
Now, we have a picture, right? There we go. Toothfested. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you again. Well, Chief, you're still here, right? Because we have Lynn Seebloom.[1589.63][1589.63](applause) Medical Service Officer on her retirement too. Good, yes. Whereas Medical Service Officer Lynn Seebloom is a 24-year employee with the City of Oceanside Fire Department, who began her career as Assistant Training Officer and ends her exceptional career as Medical Services Officer. And whereas Medical Service Officer Seebloom served at the City of Oceanside's Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act, Security Officer, and Designated Infection Control Officer. And whereas Medical Service Officer Seebloom helped teach and mentor paramedics in emergency medical services. And whereas Medical Service Officer Seebloom managed the Quality Control Program for Emergency Medical Services. And whereas Medical Service Officer Seebloom stepped in as liaison for a fire employee who was in an acute medical condition, resulting in an improved outcome for the employee. And whereas Medical Service Officer Seebloom was instrumental in guiding the City of Oceanside through the COVID-19 pandemic, providing medical expertise and making herself available 24/7. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby acknowledge and congratulate Medical Service Officer Lynn Seebloom on her many years of outstanding commitment to the City of Oceanside and her phenomenal legacy of service, excellence, and professionalism. Thank you and best wishes, Lynn.[1678.51][1678.51](applause) And lastly, we will acknowledge 35 years of service, Kisa Machado.[1680.51][1680.51](applause) Kisa began her career with the City of Oceanside on September 11, 1988, as a Housing Technician in the Neighborhood Services Department. She then became a Housing Specialist in October 1994. Kisa has now been the Supervising Housing Specialist since June 2014. Kisa has not only served the department, but also countless members of our community in helping them find safe and affordable housing. Join me congratulating Kisa for 35 years of dedication to the city of Oceanside.[1688.51][1688.51](applause) And last, Brian Steubert.[1690.51][1690.51](applause) Brian began working for the City of Oceanside on December 11, 1988, as a Maintenance Worker 1 in the Public Works Department Parks Division. In 1999, he was promoted to Maintenance Worker 2 and was a Street Sweeper Operator. Brian has worked in streets and traffic sections of Public Works and currently serves as Maintenance Supervisor overseeing street sweeping, solid waste, and closed landfill programs for Public Works. Join me congratulating Brian for 35 years of dedication to the city of Oceanside.[1698.51][1698.51](applause) That concludes tonight's Service Awards. On behalf of the City of Oceanside, congratulations to everyone recognized this evening.[1701.51][1701.51](applause) Well, that was pretty fantastic. Well, we're not done yet. We've got some special recognitions. First of all, proclamation in honor of OPD Assistant Chief Shawn Marshon on his retirement.[1706.51][1706.51](applause) Shawn? And Chief, you're coming down here too, right? Yeah. Wow. Ready? Well, this is kind of a bittersweet, because I've known, well, currently Assistant Police Chief Shawn Marshon till the end of the month, maybe?
Uh, Friday.
Friday. Okay, Friday's his last day. And he has been everywhere, in the neighborhoods, everywhere, and I, this is very, very special. Whereas Assistant Police Chief Shawn Marshon was hired by the Oceanside Police Department and started the police academy on January 7, 1997, thereafter being sworn as a Police Officer on July 27, 1997. And whereas Assistant Chief Marshon was selected as a detective for the Investigations Division Special Enforcement Section gangs in December 2003, and promoted to Police Sergeant in July 2006. And whereas Assistant Chief Marshon was selected as Sergeant of Investigations Division Special Enforcement Section in April 2011, promoted to Police Lieutenant in October 2011, promoted to Police Captain in July 2015, and then finally ending his career as Assistant Police Chief in April 2023. And whereas Assistant Chief Marshon served as Field Training Officer from January 2000 to December 2003, Drug Recognition Expert from August 2000 through June 2002, Drug Recognition Expert Instructor, I mean, he had to teach, right, from June 2002 through June 2005, SWAT Team Operator from January 2003 through July 2006, SWAT Team Leader from September 2007 through October 2011, Emergency Planning from October 2011 through January 2013, SWAT Executive Officer from October 2011 through January 2014, and SWAT Commander in January 2014 through July 2015. And whereas Assistant Chief Marshon received his Bachelor of Arts in Public Administration from San Diego State University in 2005, thereafter receiving his Master of Arts degree in Public Administration from San Diego State University in 2012. And whereas Assistant Chief Marshon graduated from the Sherman Block Supervisory Leadership Institute in 2010, Class 279, the FBI National Academy in 2013, Class 252, and the Police Executive Research Forum Senior Management Institute for Police in 2019. Busy guy, right? Always striving for excellence. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby acknowledge and congratulate Assistant Chief Marshon on his many years of outstanding commitment to the City of Oceanside and for his phenomenal legacy of service, excellence, and professionalism. Thank you and best wishes, Lynn.[1748.51][1748.51](applause) And whereas Medical Service Officer Seebloom helped teach and mentor paramedics in emergency medical services. And whereas Medical Service Officer Seebloom managed the Quality Control Program for Emergency Medical Services. And whereas Medical Service Officer Seebloom stepped in as liaison for a fire employee who was in an acute medical condition, resulting in an improved outcome for the employee. And whereas Medical Service Officer Seebloom was instrumental in guiding the City of Oceanside through the COVID-19 pandemic, providing medical expertise and making herself available 24/7. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby acknowledge and congratulate Medical Service Officer Lynn Seebloom on her many years of outstanding commitment to the City of Oceanside and her phenomenal legacy of service, excellence, and professionalism. Thank you and best wishes, Lynn. Here we go. Yes.
Well, I want to thank you, Mayor, and council members, and I want to thank the city for allowing me to work here in the city, serving our Fire Department with the firefighter paramedics, our EMTs, and more importantly, our patients that we respond to every day 24/7. Our folks are dedicated. I've been appreciative of being able to help educate them and manage those employees, and I also want to thank Chief Lawrence, who's the one that hired me back in 1997. So, kudos to him for that. So, I've, again, really enjoyed working for the city, I'm going to stay local, I live in Carlsbad, I'll be able to come and enjoy our beautiful Oceanside beaches and your special events that you have. I really admire our city and have been happy to work here for these many years. Thank you. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you. One more. Here he comes, Fire Safety Specialist Ron Owens, Ronald, Ron Owens. And you know, I think I'm going to, you know, it's like the line from Wizard of Oz, I think I'm going to miss you most of all.
Thank you.
Especially for those, you know, whenever you would hypnotize the kids. I mean, this guy was everywhere in the City of Oceanside, helping with the kids and, you know, being the driver for Santa, you know, and some, many other things. So, here it is, whereas Fire Safety Specialist Ronald, Ron Owens, is a 22-year employee with the City of Oceanside Fire Department. And whereas Fire Safety Specialist Owens served as a fire safety specialist performing fire inspections and investigations. And whereas Fire Safety Specialist Owens served as captain of the Fire Department's Honor Guard for many years. And whereas Fire Safety Specialist Owens started and ran the Fire Department's unmanned aerial systems drone program, which is a pretty fantastic thing that he started here in Oceanside. And whereas Fire Safety Specialist Owens served as a department representative in public education roles at events including Harbor Days, Annual Fire Department Open House, the Annual Holiday Tree Lighting, Lighting of the Menorah, school visits, and many more. And whereas Fire Station Specialist Owens served as Juvenile Fire Center Program Coordinator. And whereas Fire Safety Specialist Owens has always gone, always, above and beyond his duties, such as volunteering to operate the antique fire engine for various events, including the annual Freedom Days Parade, for transporting Santa to the annual tree lighting ceremony, and others. And he promises he'll come back for that, by the way, to be the driver for Santa. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby acknowledge and congratulate Fire Safety Specialist Ronald, Ron Owens, on his many years of outstanding commitment to the City of Oceanside and for his phenomenal legacy of service, excellence, and professionalism. Thank you so much. And best wishes.
Okay, I want to juxtapose what everyone else said, but first of all, I want to say, you know, I'm honored to be here in America, God bless America, because it allowed me to accomplish everything that I've ever wanted to do in life. I did 22 years here with the Oceanside Fire Department, I loved every moment of it, okay? It wasn't a chore for me to get up in the morning to come to work. As a matter of fact, I never even considered it work. I really didn't. It was something that I loved coming to see each and every one of you in passing. I also did 20 years with the federal government for the Fire Department there, and so I have about 42 years of service as well. I don't have the gray hair that some of the other ones do because I shave it, you know? Every time I saw one of those little gray things, I just, right off. But anyways, I really want to thank everyone that's come here to see all of us off, and it's just another thing that we're going to miss. And, you know, I live in Orange County, I am in charge of the drone program, so if you happen to see a drone fly over with some guy hanging on there, it's going to probably be me, you know? And I'm hopefully, I'm leaving that into good hands with Kimberly, and, you know, I see you there. But anyways, thank you guys again, and Chief, thank you for allowing me to follow my dreams, okay? Thank you.
Remember, you got to come back to drive the antique car. All right, thank you, and we're at the report for closed session, Mr. Mullin?
Thank you, the City Council met on Item 1, Status of Negotiations with the OPOA, there's no action to report on Item 1. Council also met on Item 2A1, which is the existing litigation or threat of litigation involving the San Diego Regional Water Quality Control Board, Complaint Number R920230015, there's no action to report there. There was no meeting on Item 2A1, I'm sorry, 2A2. That's all.
Thank you, we're on our consent item calendar. We are on Item Number, I guess, 4 through 21. Item 15 is being polled. Number 20 as well?
20, and 18, I want to do 18, just for a quick question.
Okay, so, that is Number 15. 18?
And Madam Mayor, we do have public speakers.
Okay, and let me just get, and 20, right? Any others?
Yeah, Wendy Bravo polled Items 6 through 21.
6 through 21?
That is correct. And we do have members of the public on Items Number 11, 13, 15, 20, and 21.
Okay, 11?
13?
13.
15?
15.
20? And 21.
20, 21. Not much of a consent calendar today, okay? So, and then Ms. Bravo polled, which numbers were they, range?
Number 6 through 21.
6 through 21. Okay, let's see if we can just, yes, Councilmember Robinson?
Just a quick, I don't think we've ever had any one person poll that many for our city attorney. Do we, how does that work?
No one's ever done that in my experience, but perhaps she's confused about what she wants to speak about, maybe give her three minutes for the consent items.
Okay. Okay, three minutes. Ms. Bravo? Ms. Bravo, where are you? Okay, is there a specific question that you had? Come on, come on to, up to the podium.
Would you like me to list them all off for the different items, or?
Okay, so, what is your primary concern? So, I can figure this out.
I have a primary concern, which is that when you're looking over this agenda here, there are some things that are not clear, and we, of course, in public hearings, we want to hear what's being said at a public hearing and then have the opportunity to speak to that item.
Okay, so, in general, you're polling them, there's not one specific, with respect, very, very specific to these items?
They're all as specific as one another, and it depends on what's said here, how I will respond, okay?
Okay, I'm going to give you, I'm going to, I'm going to start with you for right now, and I'm going to give you five minutes total.
All right.
It's been suggested three minutes, I'm giving you five minutes because they're 6 through 21.
Okay, but I haven't heard the issue yet, so I'm going to be just speaking to, you know, how the item is described here in the agenda?
Just go ahead and speak, just go ahead and speak for five minutes.
On anything I want in life?
On anything you want, with respect to the 6 through 21.
So?
With 6 through 21?
That is what you asked to be polled.
I pass on 6.
Okay.
I pass on, well, I was kind of curious about that 50?
Okay, why don't we do this? Why don't you have a seat, go through all of them, read them all, and then tell me which ones you really want to speak on, okay? I'll go ahead and start.
So, I'm going to be speaking on something I haven't heard yet.
No, this is not going to be heard, this is consent, which means that these are?
I'm sorry, then let me just briefly go through this, you know, I know that my clock is still ticking, let's see what I can do. On Number 7, I was curious about the difference between 50,000 and 99, 750, on the approval of Caterpillar?
Okay, so your five minutes has started, all right? So, go ahead.
Do you want me to repeat?
No, no.
All right, then, thank you very much. Next item was 8? Yes, 8. A professional services agreement, annual amount of 1620, pay, okay, pass on that one. HDB Approval of Amendment 2 to the percentage property. Pass on that one. 10, pass on, let's see. Not to exceed 126,000, an appropriation of 126,000, pass on that one. City Council Approval of Amendment 3 to the Professional Services Agreement, we see an uptick here from 75,000 for revised Phase 2 study, would like to know what that contains, being that it's 178,000, it looks like a jump up in the contract. City Council Approval of Two-Year Professional Services Agreement, not to exceed, pass. City Council Approve of Two-Property Agreements Between the City, this is over, this is a $2 million combined revenue for both occasions, you know, I reserve the right to speak on that after I've heard more about it.
They're not going to be discussed unless they're polled? Okay, they're not going to be discussed?
All right, so?
Pass on that one?
Pass on that one.
12?
Not going to hear. Now I'm understanding, you understand, I'm a little nervous doing this, and it's like, so, send me know that I'm not going to hear on these, I'm going to pass, 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 all the way up to 21.
Okay, thank you. So, the one that she did have a question about is 11, it's already been, thank you, you can have a seat.
All right, thank you.
11 was already going to be polled, is that correct, Mr. Navarro?
That is correct.
Okay, so we'll just go through the others then, actually, starting with 11. Approval of Amendment 3 to the Professional Services Agreement with LPA Inc., an amount of 7,500 for revised Phase 2 study, not to exceed amount of 157,250 for revised total contract amount of 178,825, to change the scope of services for the Phase 2 portion of the study, authorization for a sole source agreement, this has to do with the Police Department. A thought was in for a sole source agreement with LPA Design Studios for the completion of construction documents and authorization for the city manager to execute the amendment upon receipt of all documents. And that is, who is the person who pulled it?
On Item Number 11?
11.
Joan Bachman.
Joan, Ms. Bachman?
Hello, I'm here mostly on, talking about the agenda. This didn't say OPD on it anywhere, and it should have said OPD HQ in this?
It's the staff, the staff report has it. Did you read the staff report?
Right, but I think the agenda should have it, it wasn't clear. And for those of us who are now having to speak on a number of items, I would like to see better agendas, tonight's agenda is horrific, and that's all I had for it, was to, let's get better agendas, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Thomas, a very quick question for you was a question, why the jump? If you could just briefly explain that for Ms. Bravo?
The Honorable Mayor, City Councilmember Brian Thomas, City Engineer. The $7,500 is just an increase to the total project, so it's not really a jump to, from 75 to 178. It's just a $7,500 increase to revise some cost estimates. After we received our first 30% plans, we needed to go back and relook at it to try to reduce the cost, which required some additional work that was outside the scope of services.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Now, taking out 13, 15, 18, 20, and 21, is there a motion to approve the balance? There's a motion and second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, Item Number 13 is Approval of Two-Property Use Agreements Between the City and SciFi Networks Oceanside LLC for use of a portion of city-owned land located at 110 Jones Road and a portion of El Corazon located adjacent to the southwest entrance on Oceanside Boulevard, each for a 30-year term with a combined revenue for both locations of $2.3 million, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreements upon receipt of its supporting documents. And who pulled this one?
Joan Bachman.
Ms. Bachman?
Joan Bachman, President of Friends of El Corazon, we are quite surprised by this. We are very thrilled the city would get some money for something, however, we're talking a 30-year lease, to put something on El Corazon, where we have not discussed if it's a good place for it, it's actually putting it in something that in the specific plan is more for habitat and trails, the city has used this spot for other things, but temporarily, like laying pipes down Oceanside Boulevard. But this really caught us by surprise, and we would like this delayed so that we can look into it and see if this is the right place for this thing, and if that is all it is, and if there is enough there. And we need to think about the ramifications, if we are ready to move forward with habitat restoration, and there's this trailer sitting there for 30 years, that may not be okay. So, we are shocked by this, and we just want time to talk to staff about it, we saw it for the first time today, thank you.
Thank you, and this is what, 1,000 square feet at El Corazon? I did, in advance, ask, well, is it going to be, you know, what was it going to look like? I understand it's negotiable exactly where, because it looked like it was very close to the canyon. Can you respond to her questions?
Absolutely, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, Vicky Gutierrez, Real State Manager for the Public Works Department Property Management Division. So, for this item, it is not, it is not in the canyon, it's very close adjacent to the entry into the entry off of Oceanside Boulevard. This is not in violation of the specific plan, they have to build the, they are putting a small shelter, it's up to 1,000 square feet, no larger. It will be, an area we screened with planting, and for leases, we don't typically consult with the Friends of El Corazon, it will not impact habitat. I hope that answers your questions.
Okay. Mr. Berg, do you have anything else to add to that?
Yeah, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, the project is actually under review right now by the Development Services Department through a development application, so there is an opportunity to review that information, and we'd be happy to sit down with the Friends. We have discussed internally on several occasions to make sure that both the design and location are consistent with the specific plan, so we were cognizant of that, but we would be happy to sit down with them. I don't necessarily see a need to pull it off the agenda, we will certainly commit to working with the Friends to make sure that it's cited in full compliance with the specific plan.
Move approval.
Did you have any comments? Your face tells me you have a comment. I can't tell if you really do.
Yeah, I would have preferred to have another month to work these things out and then bring it back if there was no detrimental impact to a delay, but?
We do have three weeks for the next council meeting. Would it be possible to bring it back and have a little more warm and fuzzy on this with Friends? Is there a time, is it the essence kind of an issue?
They have done a lot of testing of the site and locations and been looking at them for quite some time, they do want to get started. This is, this agreement's in conjunction with another agreement that the city has for SciFi throughout the right-of-way areas of the city, but I can't completely answer to that, we'd have to check with them.
Mr. Borrego?
Well, not knowing exactly?
Because there's two sites, right? There's the Jones?
Right.
Site, but, no problems with that site, right?
Right.
Could they start there and then?
I don't, at the end of the day, I don't think it's going to be too detrimental if we did continue to the next meeting, if that's the council's direction. Again, I don't see the need, but certainly if that's the direction, then we'll follow the direction.
Mr. Thomas, did you have something else to add?
Just a point of clarification, Madam Mayor, this is one of two locations for the communications, we can certainly start at the other location and work our way towards the El Corazon site, we can work with them, but in order for them to get moving with their process, in order to keep their costs low, lower than they are now, because costs are rising, it is part of our digital divide process.
Right.
So, we can work with the Friends of El Corazon, but, you know, we'll take direction from council as to whether or not a delay is warranted, it's just, the longer we delay, the longer they're in the streets.
Right. Thank you very much. Well, there is a motion to approve. And there's a second. And there's a second. So, Councilmember Weiss?
Uh, Mr. Bregel, this doesn't actually approve the location or the development process that will go through the planning commission, is that correct?
Uh, no, it actually is site-specific, I believe, in the lease area.
The leases, the lease, uh, location is site-specific for both. There's two leases attached to this, and they're site-specific.
Be future discretion by the planning commission in regards to the actual development project?
Has to go through an entitlement process. So they're looking at the building and making sure it complies and such, so yes.
Thank you.
So, so it could, it could, it could move if it's, if it's close, because it, because there's, there's a concern that it's too close to habitat. I think that's what I'm hearing. It could be, it.
I don't know if it could be.
In the review.
This is a, there's two sites because they're redundant sites. So one is built, and then the other one is built. So if one goes down, the other one is in place. So that's the real reason they picked two locations.
Right.
So, planning will be looking more, I think, at the aesthetics of the building. The location has already kind of been identified and laid out, and no one, it, there weren't any issues, I don't believe, at this time with that, with the location.
So, as a point of clarification, I was just conferring with our development services director. So, compliance with the specific plan is certainly required. There's no doubt about that. However, it is actually a ministerial review as a utility facility, so there would not be a public hearing. I just want to make sure that we're clear about that.
Right, so that, uh, comments regarding the planning, planning commission is, uh?
That's correct. It's a ministerial review.
Right. So it's not going to go to the.
It's not going to go to the planning commission, no.
Hey, it's the last meeting of the month, so, okay.
Yeah, so why don't, I, I, you know, based on the information that I'm getting, why don't we just go ahead and pull that component off? And we'll bring it back in three weeks for clarification. But I would recommend that we at least move forward with the Jones Road site.
Yeah, can we do that?
Certainly.
Make it the motion? Second? Can we do that?
Yeah, sounds good. All right, so move forward the Jones site, and the, the second site will come back in January. First meeting in January.
Were you the second?
Yep.
Okay. All right. There's a motion and second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Next is item number 15. Adoption of a resolution authorizing the city to accept a U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Coastal Program grant in the amount of $56,876 to support the installation and monitoring of the Oceanside Coastal Dune Restoration Project. Appropriation of the funds for the grant account. Approval of amendment one to the professional services agreement with Rincon Consultants, Inc. in the amount of $62,711 plus 10% contingency for a total agreement amount not to exceed $84,501. And authorization for the city manager to execute all necessary documents. And, um, besides myself, who, who else pulled it?
Members of the public.
Okay, do you want to call them up, and we'll listen to the, to the public first?
We have five speakers on the side.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Carolyn Lieberman, to be followed by Mitch Silverstein, to be followed by Carolyn Kramer.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Sanchez and City Council Members for allowing me to speak. I'm Carolyn Lieberman, the Coastal Program Coordinator for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And I am speaking today as a representative of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Just to be clear, I didn't want this item polled. But, as an aside, I'm also a resident of San Diego County and a user of Oceanside Harbor for sailing and boating, and Oceanside Beaches for gathering and surfing. The service supports city council approving consent item number 15 to plan and implement the North Oceanside Dune Restoration Project in the city of Oceanside. The project meets the service mission to work with others to conserve, protect, and enhance fish, wildlife, plants, and their habitats for the continuing benefit of the American people. The Services Coastal Program is committed to providing $56,876 in funding and $12,240 of in-kind technical assistance to the city as part of a cooperative agreement to implement the project. The project will restore four dune habitat using biomimicry and green engineering to facilitate sand deposition and growth of native dune vegetation while enhancing public access to habitat within one cumulative acre across three different sites in Northern Oceanside. The project should minimize sand movement eastward off the beach and onto the roads and parking lots where it can become a maintenance issue. The project will install four-foot sand fencing, 12-inch cedar shims, and native dune vegetation plants to facilitate sand deposition, symbolic fencing and signage to minimize unauthorized encroachment, and public communication and outreach to garner public appreciation and space for native habitat and wildlife. There are very few dunes with native dune plants remaining in San Diego County. The whole county used to have dunes, and there's very few places where they exist now. Coastal sand dunes are ecosystems consisting of wind-blown sand and native plants located landward of the annual extreme wave run-up zone along the beach. And sand dunes act as coastal defense by dissipating wave energy, elevating the buffer between the ocean and the built environment, and buffering erosion between extreme events. Restoring sand dunes will benefit the federally threatened western snowy plover, migratory birds, and native dune plants, and will beautify the beach. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Uh, next is, uh, Mr. Silverstein.
It's a little picture, couple minutes in. Honorable Mayor, City Council, Mitch Silverstein. I'm the San Diego County Policy Manager for the Surf Rider Foundation. Surf Rider supports the item before you tonight to accept funding from U.S. Fish and Wildlife to help city staff with the coastal dune restoration project. This is a proactive step to restore coastal dune habitat in areas where we still have sand on our beaches. In addition to the habitat benefits like native plants and shorebirds, functional dune systems help stabilize and retain sand on the back beach. This prevents sand from being pushed and blown off the beach and onto city infrastructure. That's where my photo comes in. This is, this is Roberts Cottages, one of the small areas where the dunes are proposed. This is in February of this year, uh, and it was even worse in January when the big storms hit. So you've got a bulldozer, but Strand was closed for weeks, months. And I think this is a good location because we can trust, we can see what it looks like if it works versus another part of Roberts Cottages that won't have dunes. So you can have a good, it is a pilot project, so we can compare, right? In addition to that, dunes also provide a sand retainer, so when a giant winter storm surge erodes the top of the beach, we've got some sand supply stored in the form of dunes on the back beach. Basically, they provide natural sand retention. Another thing I like is creating a natural buffer between the beach and the streets, which helps with aesthetics and reminds people that the beach is not just, you know, of course, it's a place to recreate. I love the beach, it's my life. But it's also a place where other, you know, where, where habitat exists and other ecosystems exist too. And my hope is that it would inspire people to take better care of our beaches by creating a more natural and beautiful beach. Speaking personally, I think the preliminary plans look satisfactory. But I will say, a couple of my fellow coastal activists in Oceanside do have reservations about the harbor location and one of the proposed plant species, and I do respect their opinion very much. Therefore, my understanding tonight is that the decision before you is mainly about accepting the money from U.S. Fish and Wildlife to get this project going, and that further public outreach will be part of the plan. This is a pilot project. The locations, the plants can be altered, adjusted, even removed if they don't perform as intended or if people hate them. I'm open to all those possibilities. I also support transparency and a full public process for every step of this project. If it's approved tonight, local stakeholders need to be kept in the loop about this, and that hasn't always happened in Oceanside. In conclusion, I'm not offering Surf Rider's unconditional support for every aspect of this dune project as currently planned, but we absolutely support it in theory and know that if we don't accept this funding, we'll get nothing. Doing nothing is no longer an option. This city desperately needs new ideas and innovation to help preserve its beaches. Let's try something. Please support this item.
Uh, Ms. Kramer? Those are those burr things.
Good evening, Council, Carolyn Kramer, Citizens for the Preservation of Parks and Beaches. First off, let me be perfectly clear. I am not against a dune project. I am against the suggested location of Harbor Beach, anywhere on Harbor Beach. And I don't think the people that use the beach in front of Roberts Cottages and North Strand would also like to be fenced off from the beach and sand. Beech burr is being proposed as one of the plants in this project. The fruit of this plant is a brown burr, up to a centimeter wide, covered in sharp spines. Silver-bur ragweed is another name for beech burr, and in some cases can cause an allergic reaction from the pollen. Do you really think that dunes and plants are appropriate to be on Harbor Beach or any other active recreation beach? Beech burr is very drought tolerant and has thorns, which will discourage dogs and other trespassers from cutting through. It is also used in small dune areas that are viewed from a distance and do not have much traffic. Harbor Beach is the most-used beach in all of North County. All portions of this beach are used, including the back beach area where families have barbecues, family gatherings, and church get-togethers. The pop-up tents are all over the beach, including the back beach. Obviously, whoever wrote this certainly does not frequent Harbor Beach when every day in summer, people are driving around in circles for hours trying to find parking. And two weekends ago, on December 2nd, it was like summer all over again. Last Saturday, there were lots of soccer teams practicing at Harbor Beach, and the back beach is exactly where they set up their check, their check-in tents, right next to the sand wall. This is about access to our beach. Fencing off any portion of Harbor Beach is limiting access any time of the year. Who wants their kid to step on these thorns? I have seen these in Ventura and Morro Bay, and these thorns are dangerous to beachgoers and bear feet. I know, I don't wear shoes at the beach, flip-flops, yes. But even the thorns up in Ventura sand dunes go right through flip-flops. When people come to Harbor Beach, they want the beach experience, not a coastal dunes experience. There are locations that would be more suited for this project. The San Luis Rey River South Bank is suited for this type of project and would help protect the snowy plover from humans and dogs. The Buena Vista Lagoon would be another spot that could benefit from this project. And there is also a spot on the south end of Tyson Street Beach that could support a project like this. Let's put this project where it would be of great benefit to our beaches and a coastal dune experience. In closing, I would like to respectfully request that Harbor Beach be removed, removed from the sighting of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shapiro?
Good evening, Council and Mayor Sanchez. I'm Natalie Shapiro, Executive Director of Buena Vista Audubon, and speaking on behalf of our organization. So we support this project, and, and to be specific, support the staff recommendation to accept the grant, approve the agreement with Rincon Consultants, and authorizing the city manager to execute the necessary documents. This is exactly the kind of project that is needed to provide for sea-level-rise resilience, beach sand, and coastal area protection, and critical habitat for shorebirds and other wildlife. There are examples of this type of project conducted locally and regionally. So, in recent years, dune restoration projects have been implemented in South Ponto and South Cardiff Beach, with beaches with success in establishing native plants and reducing impacts from erosion and king tides. Another example is a project at Santa Monica Beach, showing that sand was being collected and dunes habitat being formed. So we applaud this project, and I'm very impressed with the staff report, which shows a sound, science-based plan for establishing, establishing the dunes and monitoring its success over time. In regard to the concerns about certain plants that might be inconvenient for people, I think that, um, as a project proceeds, determining the correct plant palette is an important part of a project. But I think that certain plants that are not conducive to people walking on the beach should be eliminated. But that's something that can be easily fixed. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. No other, um, folks wanting to speak. Okay, so I, I actually did pull this. I actually, if anybody noticed, the report was updated. Because when I first saw this last, the last council meeting, I was surprised because I don't recall having anything come before the council for approval regarding, for example, that in March 2023, there was a contract that was, uh, signed, um, for a PSA, a professional services agreement, $15,519, not a whole lot. But basically, that started the, um, the project to design it and figure out where it was going to be. Um, and then June 2023, city staff applied for the grant. And again, that was not before us. So I was very, very curious as to how this happened without any public input whatsoever. Especially, and my biggest concern is Harbor Beach. Growing up here, Harbor Beach is the beach where it, it gets very, very busy. It's wall-to-wall, folks. And we now have, uh, beach, uh, beach volleyball, beach soccer. I mean, beach soccer, you can't even walk anywhere. And what I usually do is, is go on, on the wall, on the, on the, on the sand wall. That sand wall was built specifically to stop the sand from going onto, I guess what would I consult, consider the, the sidewalk? This is all kind of artificial since the harbor, uh, basically was built. And then, of course, the jetty. And so, of course, Harbor Beach is a really wonderful beach. That is where all our gatherings are, for the locals, for parties, um, for these activities. And to tell you the truth, I, I felt that putting, adding something that we really haven't had there, certainly that is the history of the coastal, our, our California coast, is having dunes. But here, it's always been a beach, a very, very busy, um, active beach. And so, my concern was that, hey, we're going to make the beach smaller. This is supposed to be a pilot project. That means it could possibly be bigger, especially if it start, if we start growing habitat, which we tend not to want to do. Also, this is a completely different kind of, of dune. The one in Encinitas, um, which is Cardiff, uh, they did that dune to actually grow the sandy beach, because the 101 is getting, what was getting impacted. This, this actually is for a sandy beach, to, to actually grow habitat, to actually kind of give you that experience. It's not to, it's not so much to, to have a, a wider beach as much as to possibly have habitat, as, as you heard from Ms. Lieberman. I did get a chance to talk to Ms. Lieberman, if you could come back, please. Ms. Ms. Lieberman? Yeah, come on to the podium. Because I did ask you some questions I want, I would like to put that on the record. I asked you, okay, I see this is very, it sounds like it's very clearly having to be in Harbor Beach, having to be in front of, um, the Roberts Cottages, which is another wide beach, which would also take out some potential sandy beach for people who want to be on the sand. I asked you, could it be somewhere else? And you, I think, by the time we, we were talking a bit, you said it could be in, anywhere in Oceanside, is that correct?
The project include, part of the, I can't tell if I heard. Can people hear me?
Well, the public, the public.
So part of, so the pro, part of the project is to refine the location so they make the most sense. So it, there, we envision there would be a process of working with the community, working with the, the users, the lifeguards, the junior lifeguards, the events group, to figure out where are the best locations, which is what we did when we did this project at Ponto. So, when we first provided the funding, like we did in this situation, we have the locations we think are going to work, but they can be refined, and that is part of the process.
So bottom line, if the public comes in and says, we want to maintain this as a very active beach and not have, um, something, a dunes, a dune experience, it will not be at Harbor Beach, correct? You'll find another spot.
We will want our agreement to be whole. So, right now, it says one acre across this range of Oceanside, which is the north beach. So, basically, the pier to Har, the end of, the north end of Harbor Beach. So if you want to keep it whole, we can work with that.
It wouldn't be down to South Oak?
I'm not a, I'm aware you mean south of the, um.
South Oceanside?
I'm not as familiar. When I've been to South Oceanside, it's been full of cobble. In this project, I mean, I, I, I don't know enough about Oceanside shoreline. Let me finish, please let me finish.
Into what happened in, in Cardiff, right? Which was basically trying to grow more sand.
Cardiff was, I worked on Cardiff, and Cardiff was built in part to stop flooding of Highway 101.
The 101.
And so a lot of sand got put there, which may effectively have grown the beach, but the purpose was really to protect 101 from flooding. So all I would say, it's, I mean, maybe South Oceanside could work, but this project is reliant on sand already being at that site. And when I've walked South Oceanside from Buccaneer North, it's very, there's a lot of cobble. I don't know that the project will work. I may be wrong, but that's why we, the project includes hiring consultants or engineers to figure out, do we have the right, when do we have the right substrate, you know, wind direction to make this project happen?
And is that within that budget of $57,000?
Yes, that's part of the project.
Okay, so you're going to be doing the study. We don't have to do any studies. You're going to be doing the study, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife.
Well, we're giving the money to the city, who, the idea is then they would subcontract to the engineering group to do that work.
Okay. And in terms of maintenance, is U.S. Fish and Wildlife going to be maintaining it if it ends up somewhere on Oceanside's coastline?
In our agreement, we laid out who would be maintaining it. And so I would have to have it in front of me, but I think the city was stepping up to have their public's works do some of the maintenance.
So.
I did the maintenance when we did it at Ponto, and when I was talking about this project with the project manager, I said, I'm not going to drive up every week and look at this project. And so that was understood, but that's what I did at Ponto.
Right. Okay. Is this a pilot project?
Yes. It's a pilot project to see if this can work. So that's one benefit of doing it at different locations.
So the idea is that it would get bigger, right? It would be.
Yes, but there's no money to do that. I wrote into the work plan that if it works, because I wanted to make it open and easy administratively, if it works, and we can find more money for you, for the City of Oceanside, we can give you more money.
Right. And you mentioned that you had checked out the site during, was it beach soccer?
Yes.
From the boat?
No, no, no. We parked our boat in the harbor parking lot. Well, we parked our trailer when.
And you saw how busy it was and crowded?
Yes.
And you wondered if it actually could work there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I did.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. And that is my biggest concern, is Harbor Beach doesn't, when I think of, and I actually spoke in support of dunes as a way of creating more sand on the beach. I am concerned that we might be growing habitat and maybe even creating habitat for snowy plover. So those are my concerns. Councilmember Robinson?
Is there any more speaker?
No.
Thank you. You know, this is one of those things that they're just asking us to approve the grant acceptance so we can move forward and find out the answers to all these questions. And I just don't think we should try to design a project from here at the diocese. We don't have the technical expertise, and it's just all what we think we want. And I'm going to move the item forward as staff recommends.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second. Deputy Rickime?
This is the last several years of we've gone back and forth trying to save our beaches. And as you've said, Mayor, you've supported the dune project, but we know in South Oceanside, we don't have enough beaches to put dunes on. And so that's the challenge. But then we keep hearing dunes, dunes, dunes. So staff goes out and pursues dunes, and then dunes come in, and now there's a challenge with it. So I think that's the challenge up here in the diocese when we design these things and say these things, give staff direction, then staff listens, and then we criticize staff for that. I am concerned with that. I'm concerned with the location, too. I can assure you, I visit Harbor Beach almost daily in the summer. I grew up, I learned how to surf there. However, that's why when we say these, when we're trying to save the beaches, and there's these different ideas, some of them don't work for Oceanside, some do. But that is my concern, is we direct staff to do this, they do it, and then we criticize them. Thank you.
All right. I did check with folks over at soccer, and they would be opposed, at least so far. Councilmember Joyce?
I think it's exciting. I, for one, love the idea that, you know, again, we're going to test an idea about sand retention, and especially, this is the most natural one that I've even heard of because we're doing so little to change the actual beach. We're not adding big structure. We're really just doing small things to help the sand dune itself. And having been down, I'm going to be down there, I'm sure, a lot this summer with my son while he's practicing soccer on the beach. So I, too, do not want burrs in my feet or his feet. And so to the extent that we can make sure that that's not part of the project, that'd be really important. I also understand that this project is one that can be, you're using materials that can be pulled up pretty quickly. It's not, you know, it's not a permanent thing. It's, if this doesn't work, we pull it up and move on. And I think I genuinely am excited about the research that we're going to be doing here, so I am in support of the project.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. I'm hearing that, you know, it's going to depend, because the public input, the public part of it was not in the original staff report, so I'm really happy that it got in there for this week. I will support this, but I am definitely not supporting it at Harbor Beach. It is the place for all the public to gather, and even if it's just during the summer, long summer months that we have in Oceanside and not certainly not in the winter, we really need to maintain that space. Very active place for people to be able to go to the beach. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, next is item number 18. That's acceptance of the city treasurer's report for the quarter ending September 30th, 2023. Who pulled that?
I did.
Okay.
So I don't know if this is a fair question or not, but I'm just, I read the report, and hopefully the public got a chance to look through it and read it. But I'm just curious, how do we compare to like cities like Oceanside in our overall financial picture? If that's not too vague of a question.
Okay. Do you want to repeat that question?
Mr. Roy?
Yeah, Victor, what I'm talking about is how does Oceanside, from a financial perspective, compare to other like-sized cities? And I know I didn't have a chance to talk to you out of time, but as far as financial health and, you know, are we doing okay?
We're doing the best we can under the present market conditions. I personally am not looking at other cities. We're focused on our own portfolio and managing the assets in that portfolio to the best of our abilities and as the market conditions allow us to. But, you know, all the municipalities up and down the state are facing the same market conditions. So money's not cheap right now. The interest rates are high. The projection from the Fed is that they're going to have rate cuts sometime next year. We don't know how soon. But, you know, if you'd like, I can do some research and bring that back to another council meeting comparatively to other cities the same size that we are.
No, that's okay. And that wasn't meant to be a gotcha thing or anything. I was just curious how we looked compared to other cities, but I'll just move the acceptance of the report.
Okay, thank you.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Item number 20 is declaration of, as surplus property, one city-owned vacant parcel of land consisting of 3.02 acres located on Moro Heights Road, identified as Assessor Parcel Number 122-170-42, and no longer needed for public use, and issuance of a notice of availability pursuant to the Surplus Land Act. And I believe we were going to, Mr. Rego, we were going to pull this potentially for possible further study as well?
Honorable mayor and council members, yes, that is an option. I know that there have been some questions regarding the potential value of the land. Does it have any strategic value to the city in the long term? And those questions have been asked, and in the context of should we have those complete answers before we declare it surplus and start the disposition process? And certainly, we're willing to bring this item back and do some additional analysis and make sure that we have a more thorough description in terms of its potential value. As council knows, and as was described in the staff report, there are certainly some significant restrictions on the land with respect to other potential uses, but certainly we can do some additional analysis and bring it back at a later date. It's not really time sensitive.
Thank you. And I believe it was councilmember Robinson who pulled it.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. No, I was just, if there's no need to get rid of that piece of land right now, it's three acres. We don't often see big pieces of land like that. And I think with the Moro Hills Plan still coming and all that, too, it's only going to go up in value, I think. So if we can just hold on to it for a while, unless staff has a real reason why we need to. And I think Ms. Leahy might.
Thank you, councilmember Robinson. Honorable mayor and city council, Lindsay Leahy, Water Utilities Director. This property was purchased by the water rate payers back in 20, early 2017, 18, for the specific use of building a water reservoir. There are conditions and restrictions of the property that limit any building to a single-family home on the entire property. So there are no, as far as we're aware, no additional allowances for development or any other uses beyond that.
Is the preference of Mr. Rego to have staff pull it, or does it?
I mean, I would leave that up to the discretion of the council. If they're comfortable moving forward with the process, and we're certainly comfortable with it, if there's a need for more information, we're certainly willing to provide it.
And just to be clear, the zoning doesn't change. It's ag, the zoning is ag, right? Which is two and a half acre lots.
Yes, honorable mayor, councilmember. Pursuant to the Surplus Land Act, we do, we are not required to change the zoning. We are not required to change restrictions. They buy it. If someone were to buy it, it's as is.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, we do have a member of the public that wishes to speak on this side. Joan Bachman?
Ms. Bachman. She's waving.
Okay.
Right? Okay. So was there a motion?
No. My light's on.
Okay. Councilmember Joyce?
I had the same kind of questions that councilmember Robinson had. I felt like we should probably wait until we knew more about what's going to happen in that area. So I prefer to pull it for now.
I mean, that's not really a legal reason for keeping it, is it? Or I don't know. Mr. Mullin?
If you want to hold it for some brief period of time, you know, eventually if it's sold, then the Water Department would reimburse the funds because they purchased it, so.
Okay, we just can't hold on to it for a long period of time. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think the reason why it was purchased is no longer relevant, as I understand it.
That's correct.
So at some point, you should look at disposing of the asset and reimbursing the department.
Right, I had asked about change in law with Ms. Hines regarding acquiring property and then later building an affordable housing project, and she had said that, to me, that you can't do that anymore. So that's why I was asking.
Right. This property is encumbered with restrictions on top of the already restrictive zoning, too.
Okay.
Honorable mayor, councilmember, the one thing I would add is that Water Utilities is in process of purchasing another property to replace this property, so the funds are going to be used to offset the cost of that property. That is one critical piece, so they will have to do that without that money.
Well, I'm going to move approval. Is there a second? There is no second. So it looks like we want to go ahead and have.
My light's on.
Oh, councilmember Weiss, my apologies.
My motion is that we bring this back at such a time as there's a request to purchase the other property because time's not of an essence.
Okay. That looks like just direction of staff. Can we do that? Okay, so we'll just, do we need a vote?
No, I think we, as long as there's concurrence in that, we could pull it and.
Well, it seems like, because there was no second to move it forward today.
So presumably, we'll need to come forward to purchase the property in open session, and then we could have the declaration of surplus concurrent with that.
Okay, thank you. It is beyond six o'clock. Will 21 be quick? Who pulled 21?
Joan Bachman?
Ms. Bachman, do you still want to speak on item 21?
Yes, I can be quick.
Okay. 21 is approval of an attached amended economic development commission bylaws to change the composition of the commission by reducing members from the manufacturing and distribution category from three to one, increase members from the community at large from three to four, and adding nonprofit category with one representative.
Joan Bachman, president of Friends of El Corazon, we'd like you to remove El Corazon from the EDC. The city has had a right-hand, left-hand problem with El Corazon. Sorry, I have a slight cough.
I'm sorry, you want to remove.
I'm masking up for that reason. But we have this problem, and the EDC has, as far as El Corazon is concerned, has been a total failure as a representative of the park. They have missed everything on it. They just, at the last building's being approved, and they finally started talking about architecture. They don't even acknowledge the park to the west, west of the arena. So we have missed many opportunities. You saw that come up in an earlier item. Having El Corazon, the only city body that reviews it in this location, has been an absolute failure. We have Public Works, we have the Parks Department, and we have the EDC, and they do not work together. We have been the glue for many things in the park, and as a nonprofit, unpaid volunteers.
Ms. Bachman, I don't see that there is a representative from El Corazon on here. It's one member from tourism, one from manufacturing, or excuse me, three.
No, they have responsibility for El Corazon. They're the only city body.
Okay, but this is not specific to this item. We would have to bring that in a different way. Is that correct, Mr. Mullin?
Long-standing problem.
Is it something that?
I mean, the bylaws are before you, but what's specifically before you is the membership requirements or the criteria for membership on the bylaws.
Okay, so we could actually direct staff to look at that?
If it was your direction, we'd have to amend the bylaws and bring them back at a future meeting.
Okay.
Since that's not before you now, just the membership is before you tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Weiss?
So the reason this is here is, if you remember, Mayor, you were trying to make appointments, and two of, several of those categories had a hard time. So the commission looked at it, they made the recommendation they have here, so I move approval of staff recommendation.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. I feel that this was really much more specific request, and maybe we can look at other, at a different time, the issue about El Corazon. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you very much. It is 6:25, so I'm going to go ahead and call the public hearing item, which is item number 23, and that is adoption of a resolution certifying the environmental impact report and adopting a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Adoption of a resolution approving general plan amendment to change the land use designation of APNs 1 to 3 APNs from city institutional to medium-density B residential. Introduction of an ordinance for a zone amendment to change the zoning designation of APNs, and that again is 1 to 3 properties, from public semi-public to planned development. And adoption of a resolution approving a tentative map and development plan to allow for the construction of a 164-unit residential development located at 4991 Macario Drive. And this is the old Reynolds, excuse me, Pacifica, right, excuse me, wrong school, site. So that's why the change of all the zoning. The applicant is MLC Holding. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and request disclosure of council member and constituent, from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff only.
Developers, staff.
Some of members of the public, especially who live there in the area, and from staff.
Public, and I met with the developer and staff.
Oh, and the developer, I did meet with the developer, too. Yes, my apologies.
Staff.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Neraldo, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We have not received any correspondence or petition on this item.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and begin with the report from Shannon Vitale, our senior planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez, city council members. I'm Shannon Vitale, senior planner in the Development Services Department. I'm here tonight to discuss agenda item number 23, the Pacifica Residential Project. The project consists of a general plan amendment, zone amendment, tentative map, and development plan to allow for the construction of 164 townhomes. Staff and the planning commission recommend that the city council adopt a resolution certifying the environmental impact report and adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Adopt a resolution approving the general plan amendment, introduce an ordinance for a zone amendment, and adopt a resolution approving a tentative map and development plan for the Pacifica Residential Project. The project site is a former Pacifica Elementary School campus located at 4991 Macario Drive. The Oceanside Unified School District closed the school in 2007, and the site has been vacant since around 2013. In 2019, the school district identified the site as exempt surplus land, and on February 9th, 2021, the school district's board adopted a resolution declaring the property is exempt surplus property. is exempt surplus property. This determination was confirmed by HCD in June of 2021. The site, which is 14.55 acres, contains about 10 acres of flat area, surrounded by vegetated slopes ranging from 10 to 30 feet in height. As illustrated on this slide, the project site is surrounded by residential development on all sides except for the parcel in the west-southwest corner. This land is owned by the city and is designated as open space. The property has a general plan land use designation of civic institutional, a zoning designation of public semi-public, and is within the North Valley neighborhood planning area. The project requires four entitlements. A general plan amendment to change the land use from civic institutional to medium-density B residential. A zone amendment to change the existing zoning designation from public semi-public to planned development. A tentative map to merge the existing parcels and process a condominium map to allow for individual ownership of the units. And a development plan to approve the Pacifica Plan Development to allow for the construction of the townhomes and associated site improvements. In order to allow for residential use at the project site, a general plan amendment is required to change the existing land use designation. The applicant proposes to change the land use to medium-density B residential, which would allow for residential densities between 10 and 15 dwelling units per acre. The images on this slide show the existing and proposed land use designation and the immediate surroundings. Although the adjacent properties have a single-family land use designation, there are four parcels within 1,500 feet of the project site that have land use designations that allow a similar or higher density than is proposed. These properties are indicated on this slide. As shown in the table on the right, the proposed density for the project is compatible to the existing density for these properties and is actually lower than three of the identified properties. A zone amendment is proposed to change the existing zoning from public semi-public to planned development to allow for this residential use. The Pacifica Plan Development Plan would establish the zoning standards for this site. The Pacifica Plan Development Plan includes a residential density and housing type that conform to the proposed general plan land use designation. The project site's existing and proposed zoning and surrounding areas are depicted on this slide. A tentative map and development plan are required for the lot configurations and for the construction of the planned development community, which again is comprised of 164 townhomes, 61 gas parking spaces, approximately 60,000 square foot of common amenity areas, a new public sewer lift station, a new park, private roads, and a stormwater retention basin. The proposed density for the project is 12.8 dwelling units per acre, which is within the allowable density for the proposed general plan land use designation. Primary access to the site would utilize a new driveway at Monica Circle and Macario Drive. The street frontage would be enhanced with decorative paving, landscaping, an entryway sign, and a publicly accessible park. Emergency access would be provided at the eastern boundary of the site off of Malaga Drive. This access would be gated at the terminus of Malaga Drive. Internal circulation would be provided by private drives. The internal street network has been designed to accommodate fire trucks and other service vehicles and provides a minimum 28-foot width. The townhomes would be three stories tall with a maximum height of 38 feet. The units would range in size from approximately 1,200 square feet to 1,800 square feet and would be configured in three different floor plans. Each unit would have a two-car garage and private open space. The table on this slide provides a summary of the different floor layers. The proposed architecture is a Spanish eclectic style and includes features such as clay tile roofs, recessed entryways, stucco columns, and raw iron. The townhomes would be configured in four different building types, a threeplex, sixplex, and two types of eightplex. This slide shows some of the other render, some of the other elevations. And as you can see here, there's been care taken to provide visual interest on each elevation. As described in the staff report, staff reviewed the project for compliance with the general plan. The project's consistent with the goals and policies of the land use element, specifically regarding community enhancement, land use compatibility, housing, common open space, and landscaping. The proposed project is attractively planned, and the land use will not negatively impact the surrounding land uses. Due to the project site's lower elevation, the existing single-family homes are elevated above the developable area of the property and therefore will not experience adverse impacts from the proposed project. Additionally, there is extensive landscaping proposed along the perimeter, providing adequate setbacks and buffering. There is a 50-foot biological buffer and a 50-foot planning buffer proposed on the southwest of the project site, adjacent to the open space parcel. The proposed project would provide an alternative to single-family detached homes, which is the prevalent housing type in the surrounding neighborhoods. The project, the project site is an infill location in an urbanized area that would provide another source of housing for current and future Oceanside residents. The project's compliant with the economic and development element because it provided a fiscal impact assessment that found the net fiscal impact of the project is an annual surplus to the city's general fund. The fiscal impact analysis was reviewed by the city's finance director as well as an on-call financial consultant, and they agreed with these findings. The project's compliant with the energy and climate action element because it includes the installation of solar photovoltaic panels that are sized to provide 100% of the annual forecasted electricity demand. And there is no natural gas proposed for the project. Additionally, the project provides a tree canopy coverage that exceeds the city's urban forestry program requirements and will supplement the existing landscape with native trees that include sycamore and coast live oak. The project is compliant with the housing element because it re-designates a property to allow for residential development, therefore creating new housing opportunities on a site that does not currently allow for residential development. Since the property is currently zoned public semi-public, a zone amendment is required to change the zoning designation to allow for this residential use. The applicant is proposing a planned development zoning designation, so the project was reviewed for compliance with Article 17 of the zoning ordinance. The project complies with the minimum area and residential unit density regulations for planned development and is therefore compliant with the city's zoning ordinance. As detailed in the staff report, the project complies with or exceeds most development standards for the medium-density B residential zoning. Due to the project site's unique site layout and topography, the project does deviate from three RMB zoning standards. This includes the front yard setback being reduced to 15 feet instead of 20 feet along certain portions of Monica Circle and Macario Drive. The maximum building height is 38 feet instead of 36 feet, and the maximum wall height is 13 feet. The project was also reviewed for compliance with the city's climate action plan and, as proposed, meets or exceeds all applicable standards. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, an environmental impact report was prepared. A public scoping meeting was held on November 14th of last year to gather input from the community. Comments received from the public included concerns with site access, traffic, fire evacuation noise, visual impacts, and the preservation of biological resources. A draft EIR, which identified mitigation measures to reduce the impacts to a less than significant level for all environmental topic areas, was circulated for a 45-day review. Staff received four letters during this review. These letters were included in the response to comments to the EIR. Both the final EIR and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program were posted online and available for public review. The project has been conditioned to comply with all mitigation measures in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. With implementation of these measures, the project will not have a significant adverse impact to the environment. The project's complied with the city's enhanced notification program. A notice of application sign was placed on each street frontage, one at the intersection of Monica Circle and Macario Drive and one along Malaga Drive. There was also a notice mailed out to all property owners within 1,500 feet and all tenants within 100 feet. In addition to the scoping meeting, there was, the applicant held two community outreach meetings. An informational flyer informing people of the meeting was mailed out in both English and Spanish. In total, there were 13 people, which included city staff, that attended these two meetings. The meetings were in an open house format with members of the project team available to discuss and answer questions. A summary of those comments were included as an attachment to the staff report. The project went before the Planning Commission on October 23rd. The Planning Commission spoke favorably of the project and commented that the project is one of the best-designed and well-developed projects that it had seen. The commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the project to the city council. There were five members of the public that spoke at that meeting. Four speakers were opposed to the project and expressed concerns with traffic, parking, and that the space would be better utilized as a park or resource. So in conclusion, staff finds that the proposed project is consistent with the requirements of the general plan and zoning ordinance and therefore is recommending the city council certify the environmental impact report, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approve the general plan amendment, GPA 221, zone amendment, ZA 223, tentative map, T 225, and development plan, D 2213. That concludes my presentation. The applicant team is also here and has a presentation for you, and then we'll all be available.
Thank you. And it's a 20-minute presentation by the developer, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So let's have the developer come forward at this time. Is there an echo?
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez and councilmembers. My name is Aaron Talarico with MLC Holdings. MLC Holdings just stands for Meritage Land Company. It's Meritage Homes. We're a public home builder, fifth largest in the country. I guess what's unique about us as a public home builder is in California and specifically Southern California, we actually entitle and then build and then sell all of our projects. So in our, I think we're going to close about 800 homes this year, and 700 of them were stuff that we started just ground zero, soup to nuts through. It creates great situations for us because, as we talk to jurisdiction staff and neighbors, they know that me, myself, Aaron, Johanna, our team, we're the same people with it from the beginning all the way to the end. I just want to thank Shannon and the staff of this city. It's been great to work with you guys. It's been a very good experience. And I appreciate all the professionalism and then help as we went through the process. I want to thank the community. We've had a handful of community meetings, and we've had quite a handful of separate meetings outside of that with members of the community to make sure we could address their concerns and any issues they might have with the project and see what we can help them with. And I think most, I think, you know, we're just really excited to be in Oceanside. This is a city that we have not built in yet. And we've been trying to for, well, I've been at MLC Meritage for seven years. I know for over 10 years, we've been trying to build here. And we're just ecstatic about the potential of getting to do it. Just a little bit, just, I'll go quickly, but a little bit about, I would just hit on two main things. So we're Meritage Homes, public home builder. But two things I think set us apart is we're known as like the energy-efficient leader from national home builders. So all the stringent but good rules in California we have for home building, we implement those across the nation. Something we do here, as well as the rest of the nation, that really no other builders do in California is we also spray foam our homes. All the external of the home, it's like you could compare it to, I guess, like a Yeti. We're like the Yeti of home builders, kind of, we spray foam. If you get in one of our homes, they're quiet, they're energy-efficient. It holds all the, you know, hot, cold air, doesn't get in, doesn't get out. And then also, the other thing is we've won something called the Avid Cup, two years now going. And it's a national thing, and it's all about customer service. And that's all about, like, after we build the homes and then sell them. And then, you know, there's 10 years where we're warranting those homes that they're going to stay together and not break. And every homeowner in the room understands what that's like. We have won, like, the best service in terms of fixing problems and making sure our ultimate homeowners are happy. Couple of things, most of the stuff, you see, I guess maybe one thing I'd point out, you know, during COVID, we did upgrade all our filtration system to like a hospital-grade.
It's okay, your time's not going to be taken up.
Oh, I won't need all that, I don't think. Yeah, we upgraded our filtration system as well to like a hospital-grade filtration system during COVID. And then going to the community outreach, and I know Shannon already hit on this. We did our first notice of application mailer. We actually sent out a FAQ to 1,500 feet around, noticing, just going, hey, this is our project, this is us. And it's got some Q and As on it, just so neighbors. And it gave contact to reach out to us if they had any questions, concerns. We did that first in June. Then we did the scoping meeting. We had about 16 residents, representatives from the school district, from the city. And that was in November. And then we had two community meetings, one at the El Corazon Senior Center and another one at Libby Elementary. And, you know, we had eight and five, I believe. And, you know, it was nice, it was great. And I thank the community for coming out. We didn't, we didn't have any really opposition at those meetings. But we did have some concerns that were raised to them during them that we tried to address throughout the process through individual follow-up and then also through some design changes. And going through some of the community feedback we got, traffic was one, general concern, you know, traffic through the neighborhood. And, you know, the site right now is a vacant site. So it's 100%, there's going to be more traffic. It wouldn't be as much as if, you know, a school was there or if a multifamily apartment building or something of those nature. But it will be more traffic. Not going to sugarcoat that. But it's about 100 or so trips in the morning and about 100 or so trips in the PM, the peak hours. And the vast majority of the trips access the neighborhood via Redondo and North River Road. As part of that, going to that, we reoriented the driveway for better site visibility. We limited the access from Malaga to just an EVA. Initially, we looked at, you know, but even though that's not a true cul-de-sac, no one ever wants a dead-end road to be opened up to another community. So that's just a true EVA, and it'll be controlled with a Knox box that fire emergency vehicles can use. We're fixing curb and pavement and sidewalks along our project frontage. And then, and then as a traffic mitigation, I know this intersection is tough. It's got a two-way stop right now. We're going to upgrade it to a four-way stop sign at Redondo and Roja. And then also, just no, I just want to make a point that no utility disruptions will occur during our development. And then another concern that came up was fire. I know, you know, from the 2017 in Lilaq Fire, you know, there was concern about evacuation. We met with the fire department. I know the city has changed some of its procedures in terms of evacuation. This site actually has a very low wildfire likelihood. I think it's a 0.1%. But at the same time, I know the evacuation plan is much more efficient. And we worked with fire to make sure that we could work with that. Also, all our new homes are going to be fully sprinkled and we'll be maintaining our slopes. Parking was another one. You know, obviously, whenever you do an infill, you don't, you want to make sure you're not getting that overflow of parking from your community. So we actually took the opportunity. We have doubled what the required guest parking spaces in this community. And every one of these townhomes has their own two-car garage. Our CCNRs will have built-in inspection periods yearly to make sure people aren't using the garages for something else but for parking cars. And then, and then obviously, yeah, and then we made sure we had plenty of parking in here. We are removing some eucalyptus trees up there at the, you can see them marked with the X up there. And also, we are maintaining our tree canopies for the city's urban forestry also. And speaking to some neighbors, community members, we're also going to build into our CCNRs that the HOA is on the hook. They have to make sure they maintain the trees. Because sometimes what happens to communities is the trees are in there, and then maybe they might pull them out for some reason. We're going to make sure those trees stay so that we're always, because we're exceeding, I think, the required canopy, and we're going to make sure that stays that way. We also know that there was a desire from the Planning Commission to remove palm trees. There's not going to be any palm trees on the site either. Perimeter fencing and wall. We're meeting with some neighbors that had some specific fence issues. We're actually going to pay to fix some of those fence issues. Also, there was an agreement on some fencing with the school district where we couldn't do some stuff with fencing. But we're going to have brand-new perimeter walls, and it's going to look nice. Also, we have quite a bit of a setback from neighbors. As you can see, I think the minimum might be 70 feet. And it's really kind of averaged almost over 100 feet. And we do sit down approximately 30 feet at a lower elevation than surrounding areas. Typically, when we do an infill, we're kind of right up against existing single-family. This wasn't the case here, which was nice. We could create a really nice buffer with the slope, and then we sit down below them. And then slope stability and liquefaction, that was brought up as well. There was concerns about that. You can see, these are all our borings, all our testing. We've confirmed the site doesn't have any liquefaction or slope stability issues. And then also, full geotech analysis is part of the approval process. We went through that whole process. And then light intrusion. There's going to be no lighting on, there's a couple pickleball courts, no lighting on those. And then all our lighting is going to be shielded down, low voltage lighting. And just quickly, you know, the history of this. It was a reservoir back in the 40s, and the school was constructed, you know, 72 to 80. Buildings were demolished, schools closed in '07. Buildings were demolished, schools closed in '07, and then the last units were removed in 2020. And it's sat vacant since then. I only bring this up because, you know, for us as a, as a, as a home builder, our, our involvement in this was, you know, the school district decided to put the site up for surplus and they chose us and then we, we started moving forward with the project. In terms of benefits, you know, and I like to do this because we do do quite a bit of infill projects. And when we're looking for projects, we're looking for areas where our mortgage payment is, you know, within a 5% to 10% variance of what a long-term renter is gonna be paying for a similar type, you know, existing single-family house here. You know, our 1,200 square foot unit is a two-bed, two-bath, two-car garage, the whole works, you get to own it, obviously. At 20% down, you are roughly where our current rate locks are with Meritage and that's been something that's nice as a public home builders, we have lower rates than if you're gonna go buy a resale. We're right in that, that 30, mid 3,000 range, which is really what a rental costs in a neighborhood if you, if you looked. And this, this allows you to own the house, build the equity, et cetera. Also, these homes are all gonna be FHA qualified, so they also have the option to put as little as 3.5% down. HOA fees are anticipated to be in about $200 range, 180, 200. This is, in terms of a public benefit, you know, we know we were asked for a land use change. When we first came in, we were just doing a private lift station at the south end of the site and the city came back and said, hey, we, we've got an existing lift station that's part of a CIP and we'd really like to upgrade that or even better yet, let's build a brand-new lift station. And we said, okay. I think I was in a great mood that day. I said, yeah, absolutely, let's do it. And then I got some of the cost back and it's a considerable increase of cost, but, you know, we did, we were able to absorb it. Mainly because, you know, for for-sale housing, the market is still stayed strong even with the interest rates and the project was still, was able to absorb it fairly, but it did. And so we're putting a brand-new public lift station that's gonna service the existing lift station. We're gonna take on those flows as well as our community. And it's like a plus, like a $2 million-plus type improvement, the lift station. And, and then, you know, redevelopment of, you know, underutilized site, it's been there for a while, it's been vacant since 2010s. I know there's been some issues with people dumping stuff on it. We're do our best to clean it up and make it look nice and make it something that the community can be proud of. Shannon already does blend it, there's existing single-family around it. While this is a bit more dense, it's still for-sale housing and there's some other projects that it's very consistent with in terms of density actually below it in the immediate vicinity. Another issue that got brought up by planning commission was, was it gated? No, it's not gonna be gated. This is fully, it's an open, people are gonna be able to walk through this. We got sidewalks on our streets, parkways, we have a dog park, there's a tot lot in there, there's the pickleball courts, those are not gonna be locked with a fob key or anything, those are gonna be open. And, and there's some new public pocket parks at the entry. We're gonna, we, moving the lift station was actually a good thing because it helped us with our entry, we were able to realign our entry. They also got a nice pocket park, so you're entering on a pocket park that the residents of the community can use and it really enhanced that, that entry. That's the project. I just want to thank everyone and thank staff again and thank the council for the consideration and thank the community for engaging with us during the process, really appreciate it. Oh, and I got my whole team here for any questions if you have any. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. This is a time for the public to speak. You do not have to have registered to, to address the council on this item. Do we have any folks who did register to speak?
Yes, we do. We have two speakers that did register. Our first speaker is Wendy Bravo, to be followed by Diane Nygaard.
Thank you. Pass, okay, thank you very mu, thank you, Ms. Bravo, Ms. Nygaard. And if you wish to speak, you do not have to register, you can approach the podium, state your name and then for the record and then speak for up to three minutes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilwoman Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calaveras. And I'm sure like many people in this community would have liked to see this land preserved as a park, but the decision to develop this site was made years ago. We initially had some concerns about the project, but we appreciate very much that city staff, the developer have worked with us, heard those concerns and have addressed them. In fact, this project has raised the bar at many key issues to address climate change and we hope that other developers will follow their example. Some of those items include adequate rooftop solar so we can support future EVs, appropriate transportation mitigation measures for a residential project, the tree replacement being included in the CCR so it's not just at the time the project plans are approved, there will be trees on that site for the life of the project, and very important, no gas hookup. So with those changes, we very much appreciate this project and see no reason why you wouldn't approve it. But I do know that the concerns about parks of this community are very real. This city has not updated our park impact fees for over 25 years. And so that is the reason why open space land like this is used by the community as a park because we're not fully meeting those park needs. And so I would encourage you to make sure that we move forward in a timely manner with updating those fees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you'd like to speak, please approach the podium, state your name and you can speak for up to three minutes.
I'm Monica Wedlock. I live off of Vine Street in a complex, condo complex. On the other side, there are a couple apartment complexes and then down further south on Vine is the Tides Townhouses that came in about maybe two years ago, maybe one and a half, I can't quite remember. But when they came in, all of a sudden our water pressure dropped and it just trickles out of our pipes. And so I know you've got the sewer station planned, but I'm not sure that would include the water station part as well. And I think with all that residential property around there, I think you're gonna find you're gonna need some more pressure for your water sources. That's it.
Thank you very much and I, staff will be addressing that, correct? Yeah.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jenny Pingley Butler. I live on Claire Drive above the property. I did put my name up there, so I probably put it on something else, but.
That's okay.
So I am for and against this. Yes, it's a great design. It's too big for that area and the openings to get out of there, it's gonna be dangerous. And I appreciate the stop signs and all that, but it was mentioned at the previous hearing that the HOA has no control that once someone buys the, a townhome, two-bedroom townhome, two-car garage, they can rent a room to another couple, that's four people, four cars possibly. Yeah, there's extra parking, but when you configure that doubled plus tripled with all the cars, that's that many more people. I, it should be condensed and I, not that many homes. We do need something down there. It's just too big and I just, like he mentioned, traffic in the morning, traffic in the evening. No, there's gonna be traffic all day long. I, what street do you go down that you don't see people coming and going throughout the day? And so I'm just very concerned that once we have a fire again in that back area, there's gonna be trouble. Once, like every day to leave out of there to go pick up my son from Del Rio, I, I have to fight with crossing Vandergriff and Redondo because everyone from Camp Pendleton is leaving to go home to their homes and the area is blocked right there. We're waiting because everyone's trying to get through the light on College and North River Road. There's too much traffic already and it's just gonna be even more. So that's my concern.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item, please rise, approach the podium and speak for up to three minutes. Let's see, I don't see anyone. I do see someone.
Monica Wedlock.
I'm sorry, you already spoke, right?
Yes, but can I add something about the recent comment that was just made?
I'll give you one more minute, how's that?
I'm just suggesting turnabouts. They are so effective, we haven't really had an opportunity to experience many of them. There are a couple on Vine Street, for example, but I think you will find them, they move very well. I was in Ireland and they, that's all they had generally were turnabouts and we never had an issue of traffic congestion, it was just wonderful. So just a suggestion.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else who has not spoken yet wishing to speak? I see no one, so I'm gonna go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and ask staff to address one or two of the comments, I'm trying to remember now. Oh, it has to do with the water pressure, right?
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, City Council, we do have members of the Water Utilities Department that perhaps can speak to that question.
Okay. And also somebody to address the traffic circle, if you would. But first, the water issue? Inquiry minds want to know if with the sewer issue, lift station, would that somehow impact or are there ways that water pressure could be lowered and that is what is being experienced at this time?
Honorable Mayor, council members, my name is Brian Callenbaugh. I'm a senior civil engineer in the Water Utilities Department. A water study was completed for, water analysis was completed for this project in June of 2023. The results of the water analysis showed that adequate pressures and fire flows would be achieved at the project. Offsite improvements were identified in this analysis. It included upsizing a six-inch water main in Monica Circle and Macario Drive and upsizing that to an eight-inch. That is part of the conditions of approval and will be part of this project. No other additional offsite improvements were identified in the study. And there were also onsite improvements such as their looped fire main and a looped domestic water system.
So you don't anticipate that water pressure will be a problem?
No.
Okay. I think that's what people wanted to hear.
Yeah, based on the analysis, the water pressure's all met the city requirements. It's quite a robust system up there, even though there's a lot of residential, there are plenty of water lines throughout the residential.
And, and the one testimony about water pressure existing at this time, you think that'll be improved via part of, some of these improvements?
An improvement to the water pressure?
There was a testimony from one person who indicated that they were already experiencing lower water pressure?
Mayor Sanchez, if I may? That testimony had to do with water pressure in a different part of the city, not in this general vicinity of the project area.
Okay, I apologize, I thought it was in the general, I thought it was near here. No, okay, my apologies. Did you want to say something else?
No, she was just, Mabel was just discussing, no, that was, as Sergio stated, a different portion.
Okay, thank you.
I'm aware of the project, Mabel Wada, Principal Water Engineer and Water Utilities Department. I'm aware of the project that's at Vine Street and Oceanside Boulevard that was completed a couple of years ago. That project would have had a water study as well that would have demonstrated any offsite improvements to ensure that there would be sufficient pressure. We can take a look at that, so I suggest the resident to contact Brian Callenbaugh and myself and we'll take a look at what the issue is there.
Well, thank you, I'm seeing some nods, thank you very much, you will be contacting her, correct? All right, thank you. And as to the, I think the, the issue that I've heard before is the traffic, especially on Macario since that is the entrance. And what is that there? Roja? Because that's another, would a traffic circle work there?
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, City Councilmembers, that was not part of this project. Perhaps I could defer to the, the team's traffic consultant, they are here in the audience.
Okay. That was a issue that was brought up.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. As Shannon mentioned, a city, I'm sorry, a roundabout or a traffic circle, while it was not analyzed, just based on my opinion, it would probably have worked, however, from an operations standpoint, it would probably have worked due to low traffic volumes there. However, one of the issues with roundabouts in general is that they have a bigger footprint and given that this is a built, a built-out environment with homes, you know, surrounding the intersection, it would probably mean that it would go into the rattle way in order to be able to construct a roundabout so there are other issues aside from the traffic operations standpoint with a roundabout.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so to the council, Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to say, the folks from Meritage, I've met with them a couple times on this project and I'm gonna agree with, with Ms. Nygaard.
You are?
Yeah, I am. It's, it'll go public, I know, but I, I think that the project as it's been presented to us really does set a high bar for that area. And I can just say that until this evening, and this is in my district, I had received no calls or concerns about anything regarding the project itself. No, I think maybe some of my constituents like Councilmember Joyce Better might have got ahold of them, I don't, I think he had some concerns, but other than that, I, I really do appreciate the project. And I, and I would just speak to the traffic circles and stuff. I think what, what, where the area that the lady was talking about is really more down around Vandergriff and those areas where it's very difficult to sometimes access. And I'm hoping that the city in time will look at these areas and figure out how we can expedite the ways of moving our residential traffic into some of our bigger traffic flows. And I too am a big fan of traffic circles. So I'm gonna move the item as presented and, but I know I'm sure that people might have something to say about it.
All right. I did want to ask a question of the developer regarding, would you, would you consider including a condition that there not be, that there not be any short-term vacation rentals?
Yep, Madam Mayor, yeah, so we actually already build in our CCNRs on all our communities that they can't do short-term rentals. So yeah, it'll, it'll be in there, so yeah, we're fine with that.
Okay, thank you very much. So did you say it's already in there or it's gonna be amended to add?
Yeah, we do it by, by, that's our standard is we don't allow short-term rentals in our units. However, there was a previous speaker that spoke about people renting rooms out, that's, that's out of our, that's housing.
That's different.
Yeah, it's Housing Accountability Act.
I'm talking about less than 30, what is it, 31 days?
Less than 31 days, yeah. We don't allow that, yeah. And we'll have it in our CCNRs, yeah.
Could that be added to the, to the conditions?
Yes.
Mr. Mullin?
Yes, that could be added with the direction of the council.
Okay.
We normally add it automatically in density bonus projects, but this is not a density bonus project, so it wasn't, but it's also outside the coastal zone.
Right.
Which will be relevant here later item.
Right. So would you consider amending yours to include the condition that there not be any short-term vacation rentals? Thank you very much. Okay, just wanted to say that before the second, was there a second? I'm sorry. I'll go ahead and second it, okay? And Councilmember Joyce?
Okay, so the first thing that I just wanted to bring up and if, if the developer would come back to the mic, I have just a couple of questions. There were a lot of public benefits listed on that page and the one that I, at first was most concerned about with this is the open community that was listed under the benefits. So can you describe again, so you said there's, it's open, so there's a, there's a couple of pickleball courts, there's a dog park and there's a nice little playground it looks like in the middle? Is that the kind of?
Correct, yeah. And two pickleball courts, oh, you said.
Fastest growing sport, never gives, never loses a chance, I say.
Yeah.
So, so from that perspective, making sure that this is open. So from that perspective, making sure that this is open to the community that's around it is really important to me. I think, I'm appreciative that there's not a gate at the front entrance. So my question would be, are there gonna be signs up that say "private" or "do not enter" or anything like that? Because even without a gate, if it says that on the signs or it says that on the dog park, that's not an open community.
No, no, we typically don't have those. And then, I mean, if you would like us to put in, as a condition that we would not place any signs like that, we're okay with that as well. Whenever we're doing these kind of infill projects, we always expect, even though they're HOA-maintained, because that's simply what the jurisdictions want, is for us to maintain them, we always expect them to be public.
Okay.
So yeah.
So if council agrees with that condition, that's, I think, really important to me for the community to feel like it's part of that community and that all the beautiful things that are coming in with it, which I agree, this is a very nice-looking development and it hits a lot of standards. I just think maintaining that openness to that local community, so that's really important. So if you're okay with adding that in, then I'm, I don't have any more questions.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay, so.
That's gonna happen anyways, I think.
Pickleball on Wednesdays.
No digital signs, okay, no digital signs.
So with that being said, thank you. I'm very excited for the reasons that were expressed earlier and also that this is a missing middle, which we rarely get to see. I am excited that for sale products are coming forward, that I think it's very few and far between that families are gonna get a chance to own a home in our city. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. So I appreciate that you have agreed to, that seems to be your practice, no short-term vacation rentals, thank you so much. I did hear from the community initially, and I mean, this is when the school district was having it for sale, and this community had treated it as open space and park for many years. And so it was very difficult, and this was actually a decision by the school district to have housing. There was no way that we were gonna be able to get this property and then build a park. That was definitely the direction from the school district. Having said that, I would, I appreciate the openness of allowing the surrounding community to be able to use those facilities. I didn't hear you talk about the park, the park itself, not the dog park, but the other park. That also was, when we talked, you talked about how that would be open to the community, correct? Yes. So was there any discussion to try to make it bigger or anything like that? Right now, how big is it again? That park, that's kind of like on the edge, right?
Oh, that was, yeah, the one at the entrance is, yeah, it's a small, that's a small park, benches and walk your dog. I don't have the exact square footage, but I'm sure, but it, we, instead of doing a larger main one, we separated like so that one, and then in the central located the tot lot and playground equipment type stuff. And then we've got the dog park in the back, and then the pickleball courts over here, and then walking paths to each of them. So that's what we typically like to kind of break them up around a community, so.
I see.
Yeah.
So the one on the edge was actually smaller, is that what you were saying? Because I.
You mean the one at the entry or at the back?
The back, I think it was.
The back's the larger, that's the larger, like, dog area, that's probably.
Oh, it is a dog park that we were talking about?
Yeah, you can run your dog, well, dog baggy stations and stuff. But you could use it for a lot of different things.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, I think it's gotta be at least 15,000, 10,000 square feet or so back there. And there's also the basin, naturally, you know, planted.
Right, okay. And so basically, that was an early on, thank you very much, sir. And then basically, early on, those were the concerns that I heard, was from the youth especially. It's like, you know, you know, I think initially it was like, try to stop this project from going forward, which it was really, again, a decision by the school district. The next concern, though, that I heard from, were from the folks who live on Rojas and Macario. And they were concerned about the entrance and how, you know, they're concerned about the traffic there and whether or not they were gonna be able to get out, to go to work, and all those kind of things. And so when somebody suggested a traffic circle, would it even fit there? To staff, to staff? I guess you didn't look at it at all with ideas?
Mayor Sanchez, if I may? So that wasn't a requirement of the Transportation Engineering Division, as the project transportation briefly explained, that traffic circles typically take up more land. There may not be enough right-of-way. It wasn't analyzed as part of the project. A traffic circle may result in the required to take private property. I don't think that's something that's an interest of the developer.
Because it is, I don't know if you can show it again? It's, the entrance off Macario is in the upper right of the, like, the map. And then there is, like, just a little bit further, there's Rojas that goes down, up and down. And so I see why people are concerned about, but those were the concerns that I heard was off of Rojas and Macario.
Mayor Sanchez, I can tell you that that intersection is conditioned to install a four-way stop at the request of the city's traffic engineer.
I guess what I'd be asking is, once, once this is built, which will, I don't know how long this will take, it is, it is a nice project. Certainly, I was surprised by it, I was like, wow, it's not, you know, 10,000, you know, 10,000 stories and stuff. But, you know, and really high density, whatever. And it is a good product, that it's in the middle there, which, you know, it's not what we tend to see, it's the higher end. So it is attainable, I guess. I guess that's what I would, that would be the definition of attainable for me, right? But the only concern was that, you know, the traffic there. And I'm saying, and I guess for future councils maybe, I don't know when this is gonna be built, but to really monitor this to staff, because there may be a need for more traffic calming, getting people in and out of there besides the stop signs. I mean, we couldn't do a light, right? Not there.
It likely wouldn't, Mayor Sanchez, it likely wouldn't meet the warrants that would authorize the installation of a signal at this location.
Maybe one day it would. All right, there is a motion, a second, no other lights, please vote.
I need to title the ordinance, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you.
So you have the series of resolutions for the General Plan Amendment and the other entitlements, but you also have the introduction of an ordinance of the City of Oceanside amending the zoning designation for certain real property located at 4991 Macario Drive, from Public, Semi-Public PS to Plan Development PD Civic Zone Amendment.
Thank you, and I did mean to say that there are no affordable units that are being built as part of this project. It's, election is to pay in lieu fees, which is $2.365 million. Right, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, going back to the general items, because we did complete all the consent items, correct? Okay, good, I needed to ask you that question before. So number 22 is introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Municipal Code to preclude additional short-term rentals in all zoning districts outside of the city's coastal zone. By the way, do we need a break at all before we go into this? Because this is probably gonna, yeah, five minutes. So how many people do we have signed up to speak on this?
We have 24 speakers.
24 speakers, okay. If you have, today is the first day that we could do the.
Group presentation.
Group presentation, which is four, is it four people?
Four.
Is this for short-term rentals?
Four people or more. If you want to speak as a group and you have all the people here, please approach the city clerk so he can make sure he has you. That, we're gonna take a five-minute break, sounds like. Sergio, thank you very much to, what did you say? To 7:25, thank you. That's right. Thank you. So we're gonna go ahead and get started with item number 22. This is introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Municipal Code to preclude additional short-term rentals in all zoning districts outside of the city's coastal zone. We're gonna begin with a report by our city planner, Mr. Sergio Badera.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez, and members of the City Council. My name is Sergio Badera, I'm the city planner for the City of Oceanside. I'm here to present the proposed municipal code amendment to Chapter 24 of the city's municipal code. So staff recommends that the council introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the municipal code to preclude additional short-term rentals in all zoning districts outside of the city's coastal zone. As way of background, in 2019, the City Council adopted Chapter 24 of the Municipal Code to regulate short-term rentals. As recently as August 30th of this year, at the Housing Production Workshop, a City Council provided direction to staff to bring forward a municipal code amendment to preclude any additional short-term rentals outside of the city's coastal zone. It should be noted that tonight's action would preclude not only unhosted STRs, but also hosted STRs outside of the city's coastal zone. Hosted STRs could be rented out as, it's primarily someone's primary dwelling unit, but a portion of it could be rented out for short-term rentals by either the owner of that property or a tenant.
And these are new applications, not existing?
That's correct, Mayor. Currently, the city has approximately 1,000 short-term rentals. Approximately 719 of those are located within the city's coastal zone. Approximately 283 of those are located outside of the city's coastal zone. And there's approximately 91 applications in process in various stages of the permitting process for either tax certificate or a short-term rental permit. The proposed amendment to Chapter 24 would introduce a subsection to Section 24.6, it would be 24.6C. And it basically would read, "Short-term rentals located in any zoning district outside of the coastal zone are prohibited. Short-term rental permit issued for a property outside of the coastal zone prior to the effective date of this section shall not be renewed after the property is transferred to a new owner." It is presumed that short-term rentals occupy housing stock that would otherwise be available for long-term housing. The proposed amendment is intended to provide some level of relief to the housing shortage that is being experienced here in the City of Oceanside and in our region in general. The proposed amendment is specific to short-term rentals outside of the coastal zone that would allow the continuation of current short-term rental operations provided STR permit stays current. If an existing operator allows the STR permit to lapse, they would no longer be eligible to operate an STR. Permits do not run with the land, and once a property transfers ownership, a new property owner cannot operate an STR. On November 20th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item to consider the proposal to preclude additional short-term rentals outside of the city's coastal zone. At that meeting, the Planning Commission voted 5-0 to not recommend the City Council adopt the proposed amendments. Rather, the Planning Commission, through adoption of Resolution 2023 P29, recommended that the council conduct a complete analysis of Chapter 24, including the coastal zone. They also recommended that the city ensure that regular reporting inclusive of enforcement complaints occur on a regular basis through the Planning Commission and City Council. And finally, they recommended that the city staff analyze the conversion of modest three- and four-bedroom homes to more commercialized homes that sometimes have 10 or more bedrooms. At that Planning Commission meeting, they received public testimony from five speakers. Among the testimony received was assertions that the city is not actively enforcing STR-related complaints. As observed by the statistics on this slide, the Code Enforcement Division and OPD actively enforce complaints related to STRs. Specifically, some of the complaints that we most often hear about are noise and high occupancy complaints. This table kind of outlines those statistics, that they've actually dwindled over time. There was seemingly a spike during COVID, for obvious reasons, when people weren't allowed to gather in large numbers that weren't in their private homes. And you can see that those statistics have dramatically decreased over the years. 90% of the citations for unpermitted STRs are identified through GOV OS software. Since 2020, Code Enforcement issued more than 830 monetary citations to STR operators, totaling over $356,000 since 2020. The data does not include the thousand-plus complaints that, or the thousand-plus citation warnings issued where there's no monetary fine involved. The potential fiscal impact of adopting the resolution or the ordinance as proposed would be that the city, in the last fiscal year, collected approximately $8 million in transient occupancy tax related to STRs. The average attrition rate over the last couple of years has been between 5% and 7%. So precluding additional STRs outside of the city's coastal good would likely have a negative fiscal impact to the city's revenue. With that, staff is recommending that the city introduce an ordinance to amend Chapter 24 of the Municipal Code to preclude additional STRs outside of the city's coastal zone. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions that the council may have. We also have staff from Code Enforcement here to answer questions related to those enforcement statistics we provided.
Thank you, Mr. Badera. So we have, did you say 25?
24.
24, okay. Because there are 24, gonna be asking that you speak for two minutes each, two minutes each. I know, if you have written out your comments, please try to, you know, as your name is called, you know, before your name is called, try to cut it down. But go ahead and call the first, what is it, four? Jay Goldberg, then Gary Brown, Doug Smith, then Richard Fox.
And we have two podiums, so as your name is being called, please make your way to the next available podium.
And I understand there are no group presentations?
Not on this item.
Not on this item, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, staff. My name's Jay Goldberg, I'm a North County native and operate NiceNeighbors.org, a volunteer project to manage STR compliance in the City of San Diego. This project represents a years-long quarter-million-dollar investment of my own time and skills as a tech worker to build software and conduct data analysis on STRs. My work has resulted in hundreds of unlawful STRs being removed from the City of San Diego. I'm here because of my negative experience with STRs and as an observer of the visible suffering of those who have fallen into homelessness. A primary comment of STR proponents is that STRs benefit individual mom-and-pop hosts looking to share their home. Arguably, this is no longer a business of individuals. In Oceanside, only a quarter of Airbnb listings are by a host with a single listing on their account. 84% of the listings in the coastal zone are by Airbnb hosts with more than one listing. And the top 10% of Airbnb hosts control 45% of the listings in Oceanside. I'm sure you've heard recently that the Coastal Commission may be softening its stance on STRs after a recent meeting this month where they learned that STRs contribute about 1/5 to all rent increases. The author of the study points out the winners and losers reality that every full-time STR is a housing unit. STRs inflate prices by reducing housing supply and by driving more speculative demand in residential housing. Full-time STRs are by no means the sole cause of our housing crisis, but they are the single most immediate, least contested item versus other possible actions we can take. The sentiment towards STRs turned negative even in places like Dallas, which banned STRs in June of this year. Zoning is an intentionally created market inefficiency meant to promote market stability and the well-being of a majority of people living in a place. I have most of my data available on my website, if anyone wants to take a look. Thanks.
Thank you. Gary Brown? Are you Gary Brown?
Thank you for listening, my name is Gary Brown. I first moved to Oceanside in May of 2004, to the 500 block of South Dittmar. While I finally enjoyed our time with Newlyweds, we started a family. While I finally enjoyed our time with Newlyweds, we started a family. Family grew fast, and we moved out of our 1,000-square-foot beach bungalow. After moving, we began renting out our beach house to help pay off the mortgage and property taxes. The vision is to come back to Oceanside someday to retire. I'm an engineered by professionals, so I like to look at the numbers objectively, using the staff's own report data today. Table 2 gives those common STR complaints as unpermitted STRs and unpermitted construction. I don't understand how this could be used to preclude additional short-term rentals. If the city advances with precluding additional short-term rentals, it will still need to enforce the law on those that ignore the permitting process. So, how can this possibly be used as justification for the ordinance? Table 3 listed complaints related to noise, parties, and high occupancy. Regarding high occupancy, there are a total of four complaints, four over the last two years out of over 1,000 permitted units. Four citywide complaints over two years. Clearly, that can't be the reason we're all here. How can we use four complaints over two years to infringe on the private property rights of our Oceanside homeowners? Now, let's look at the party noise complaints. These numbers don't add up either. Inland party noise complaints were seven in 2019, then rose to 42. You saw the numbers already. The numbers dropped back down. Most recently, in 2022, it was seven out of 286 for the inland STRs. Only 2.5% of the total inland STRs works out to one complaint every seven and a half weeks. This is ridiculous. This cannot possibly be the justification. Same is true for coastal numbers. These numbers, by the staff's own report, don't support that there's a problem with STRs in Oceanside. The city council needs to provide transparency to the groups that are lobbying to use political creep to push the ban of new short-term rentals towards our coast. Otherwise, what would be the motivation to just focus on inland short-term rentals? Maybe there's another explanation, but I don't see it in the staff report. Lastly, the focus on partying and noise is not exclusive to short-term rentals. It's great to have the boogeyman of those short-term renters, but there are many homeowners and renters that can also make plenty of noise.
Thank you. Thank you. Doug Smith, followed by Richard Fox. Doug Smith, are you here? Okay, I guess Doug Smith is gone. Richard?
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Richard Fox, lifetime resident of Oceanside. I'm also president of the South Oceanside Community Emergence Association. I support the agenda item, eliminating short-term rentals. I think, though, we should be reviewing and revise the STR in the coastal area. There's way too many per block. The number of bedrooms should conform to the original house and not have like 10 bedrooms per unit. This would help eliminate the huge party houses. There should be inadequate, there should be adequate parking for everybody, including the locals, to be able to access the beach. We need better enforcement. In the timeframe of the review and revisit the STRs in the coast, I think we should have a short moratorium to give time for these corrections. Please consider this to help save our coastal area. Thank you, and have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Next is Laura Basset, followed by caller? Laura Basset? Okay, she left, okay. Followed by Colleen Balch. Yes.
Honorable counsel, thank you for persevering. My name is Ty Kaler. I've been a SouthO resident for 26 years, and this has been a journey. So, I think we can call this and say that the short-term rental social experiment is coming to an end, and council has now come back to serving its constituents. Thank you very much for coming back home. We appreciate it. So, the problem is that we have to deal with the aftermath. There are some bad actors entrenched both inland and in the coastal zone. Obviously, they're more concentrated in the coastal zone, but this council appears to be ready to deal with it. Just as an example, before I came here, Vekasa, who has about 50 rentals under management, is currently offering 11 bedrooms, sleeps 36. It's on South Pacific. No permit, doesn't matter. Beachfront only, has 12 bedrooms, sleeps 28. They have a very good description. Stunning 12-bedroom, single-family home sitting directly on the water. If you have a large group, this home is for you. Four-car parking. Penny Hills, there's an offering for four bedrooms, sleeps 30. That's inland, single-family residence. And for all this, you know what we got? We got $163,000 total TOT for the fiscal year from 2022 to 2023 per the staff open testimony at the November 20th Planning Commission testimony. $163,000. The past council, past members sold us down the river. We got nothing for, we got nothing in return for the devastation that was caused. And it's sad. But here we are. It's a new day, and it looks like you want to go forward. So, let's, I support the measure, but I'd like to hear from the Planning Commission, the Housing Commission, the Housing Element. Let's close some loopholes. Let's get this thing ready. I mean, let's go after it. So, we can do it. That's why we're here. And again, I'm ready to go to work. Welcome home.
Thank you. Colleen?
Colleen Balch, SouthO. I'm a member of the Save SouthO and also the Community Emergence Association. I was also on the Ad Hoc Committee for the short-term rentals, and this is not what the Ad Hoc Committee wanted. I do support the change in this ordinance, and if we would have gone with the original proposal from the Ad Hoc Committee, we probably wouldn't be in this mess. However, what Ty said is exactly true, and we definitely need to fix the enforcement problem. Even at the SouthO Community Emergence Meetings, the police officers that come there tell us specifically, "Make sure if you call about a noise problem and it's a short-term rental, you follow up the next day and call it in to Code Enforcement." That's not how this is supposed to work. The city's supposed to be taking these and putting them all into the same basket. That's why those stats are wrong. And I can testify to my own complaints that never got handled, and I had to go to a councilperson to get it, get help. So, I support tonight's proposal, but when we move everything to the coastal zone, we need to redo this ordinance, and I agree with what Richard said. We need to put a short-term moratorium on any new ones in the coastal zone until we get those fixed, because it's not going to work if we leave it the way it is now. Those homes were originally three- and four-bedroom homes that are now 10 and 12. I didn't know there was a 12. So, again, I really appreciate this coming back around, and I appreciate that you've all said this is what you would like to see. And again, I will say Merry Christmas and have a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Wendy Bravo, followed by Matt Caulfield, followed by Kimberly Jackson.
I would like to say that we should all oppose anything that's going to create any kind of high density in the area or increased traffic congestion or a rise in crime. I'd hate to see SouthO being mansionized, you know, by a slapdown, a project of 10-bedroom homes and this sort of thing for short-term rental. That's just my opinion, and I'm sticking to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
Good evening. Matt Caulfield, Oceanside resident for the past 24 years. The ordinance should be disapproved. First, it ignores the Planning Commission's recommendation to include the coastal zone, where some 70% of the STRs are located. It ignores and is a distraction from the real problem, non-hosted STRs in the coastal zone. In June 2019, you also ignored the Planning Commission's recommendation and permitted STRs in the coastal zone. The result? A prime seashore, single-family R1 residential area was converted to a corporate, investor-owned luxury hotel row with rates few Oceanside residents can afford. Individual seashore homes have been demolished and replaced by 10-room hotels permitting up to 22 nighttime and 32 daytime guests. Approximately 50% of all the coastal houses are now owned by corporate, non-hosted STRs. 40% of the homes along the South Pacific Street are owned by corporate STRs. One corporate investor owns 25% of the homes along South Pacific Street. That owner operates more rooms than the Seabird Hotel, twice as many. The ordinance also does not recognize the fundamental difference between a non-hosted and hosted STR. Hosted STRs are run by Oceanside residents in order to make ends meet and are, in fact, enhanced communities. There are very few complaints from non-hosted STRs. In summary, I have three questions. Why penalize Oceanside resident, hosted unit, resident owners when the problem is non-hosted STR? Why exclude the coastal zone? That's where the problem, and 70% of the STR. And last, why use specious legal argument to defend against common sense restriction when other cities have implanted such research?
Thank you very much. Kimberly Jackson, followed by Kayla Matthews.
Honorable mayor and council members, my name is Kimberly Jackson, and I operate a small, local firm called Vacation Rentals by Kimberly. We manage 14 Oceanside homes for local members of your community. I respectfully request rejecting the STR amendment to Chapter 24 Municipal Code or at least require city staff to reevaluate the situation and obtain input from STVR owners. The basis for my request is the Planning Commission unanimously rejected the amendment, and that is a huge red flag that the amendment is flawed. Number two, coastal zone demarcation is arbitrary, illogical, and counterproductive. Everyone outside of Oceanside considers all of Oceanside coastal. All residents benefit by city council and staff promoting that homogeneous view. This amendment does just the opposite. A great example is a home that we manage at 509 South Freeman. It sits in townsite closer to the beach than city council chambers, but somehow it's not coastal enough to be considered in the coastal zone. What about the great ocean views on Dittmar, Clementine, Fire Mountain? They're not coastal enough either. Number three, omitted variable bias, false narrative. The STR issue suffers from omitted variable bias. The city council hears every resident complaint, while few, if any, residents write to praise STRs and relay how they help their neighborhood. STRs create and continue to provide a net positive for the community in these six important ways. Number one, STVRs eliminate a substantial number of rundown properties, some known for criminal activity that made neighborhoods less safe, less attractive, and consumed city resources. Number two, short-term vacation rentals increased revenue as capital investments brought work and jobs for Oceanside tradesmen and small businesses like construction to make improvements. Number three, short-term vacation rentals' capital investment improved rundown neighborhoods, improved quality of housing stock, raised property values, and encouraged neighbors to improve and better maintain their homes. May I ask for seed time from Kayla Matthews?
No. Thank you very much. Kayla Matthews? I guess she's not here. David Fishbach? I guess he's not here. Marco Gonzalez?
Marco Gonzalez, I was really looking forward to speaking after Mr. Fishback.
I thought you would.
You know, beginning about 2004, 2005, I, in the city of Encinitas, confronted Mr. Fishback with a ton of shenanigans up on Neptune Street, only to watch him move up here to Oceanside and continue for nearly 20 years doing the exact same thing to you guys. What are we doing? 283 units outside of the coastal zone, and we're spending all this time on an ordinance that frankly does nothing for nobody that's any good. The issue is the coastal zone. I get it that you want to go to HCD and say, "Look, we did this. It's good for housing stock inland," but it's not an issue in our city. It's just not. The issue is the coast. We heard the Coastal Commission talk about how we're losing access to the coast because we're losing housing to the coast, at the coast. We're not building new housing at the coast. Now, unfortunately, your enforcement, despite what planners, what planning has put up on the screen, is paltry. I've watched as my clients have tried diligently to meet with planning staff, Code Enforcement staff, city attorney, the city manager, and watch you guys sit on your hands. We have provided every amount of evidence that you guys need to do actual enforcement. You've done no TOT audits. When someone doesn't get a registration, instead of going in and collecting TOT for their past illegal rentals, like they do in Solana Beach and other cities, you guys instead slap them with a little slap on the wrist and make them get an after-the-fact permit. You should be doing absolute penalties, not allowing them to get permits for at least a year after they've been caught. A lot of these are seasoned, experienced owners who are directly flouting the rules because it pays for them to ask forgiveness instead of permission. It's time to lose that mark as Oceanside. As the beach community comes up in Oceanside and as we have all of these nice new rentals and hotels downtown, we don't need to be kowtowing to the relatively small number of owners who have been flouting the rules for years with absolutely zero meaningful enforcement by your staff. Let's do it differently.
Thank you. Whitney Stensred?
Good evening. While the effort to create affordable housing is noble, I strongly question how banning future STRs in only the non-coastal zone of the city, an area, mind you, that has less than 1/3 of total STRs, will do anything to move the needle on housing. It does, however, stands to amplify the problems that exist with STRs that all STRs already bring to the communities in which they operate. The complaints and violations of STRs that will be grandfathered in will only be exacerbated. Similarly, the coastal zone, the area that is already home to over 70% of Oceanside's STRs, will continue to go unregulated, and the violations that plague and diminish the coastal residential zone will be amplified. What is the plan for that? This appears to be a hasty, arbitrary, and lopsided regulation. If your attention is truly turning towards short-term rentals, then your efforts should be solely concentrated around studying and overhauling the Oceanside short-term rental ordinance, including an analysis of complaints and violations, financial accounting, and permit reviews. Any STR regulation must be comprehensive in nature and have a corresponding plan and promise to finally address the problem STRs in the city. You must state and show a commitment to protecting the quality of Oceanside's residential communities. This includes ensuring that the long-term renters, homeowners, and visitors of the coastal zone are not tortured and driven away by massive, unruly, and negligent party house rental operators. Please do not take this random action on STRs without an assessment and a plan to deal firmly with the associated illegal home construction, noise, parking, and capacity violations currently tolerated, and the list of current bad actors that knowingly operate them. Instead of an empty gesture that will have no impact on housing availability, put your focus on emulating other STR ordinances, San Diego, for instance, that have strict and enforceable guidelines that successfully protect the integrity, livability, and accessibility of their communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Schmidt, followed by Tor Stensred, followed by Joan Bachmann.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, city council members. My name is Dan Schmidt. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this issue. I agree with the unanimous decision of the Planning Commission on November 20th to not adopt the proposed municipal code amendment, first satisfy their stated recommendations. He's embodied their and many citizens' thoughts on how to proceed. Seems foolish to disregard a 5-0 vote, proceed with the amendment anyway from a commission that was appointed by you all. I stand with their recommendation for the city council to direct staff to, and I'm just going to read this back, "conduct, one, to complete a conduct analysis of," sorry, "to conduct a complete analysis, Chapter 24 of Municipal Code, to include an analysis precluding additional short-term rentals citywide, including the coastal zone, review current enforcement mechanisms. Two, to ensure regular reporting inclusive of enforcement complaints occur on a regular basis, both Planning Commission and the city council, to analyze, number three, to analyze the impacts of the conversion of modest three-to-four-bedroom homes to commercialized homes, contain 10-plus beds." Only once these Planning Commission-recommended actions are taken should you make an educated reform to STR policy. Otherwise, why do we have a Planning Commission? Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Go ahead.
You have them. Did you hand them out?
Yes, go ahead and speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Dear city official, my name is Tor Stensred, a member of the Association of Concerned Beachfront Homeowners of South Pacific. Most of you have worked with me with, and an enjoyable time for the last 30-something years. Where we sit, the real problems are found in the coastal zone, not non-coastal. Why are you concentrating all your efforts outside the coastal zone? Why are you concentrating all your efforts outside the coastal zone? We are, we support a pause in the process. Some of our members have been driven out of their homes because of party house and high density, after waking up to vomit over the property. That, adjacent to the Fishbach rental property, another because of trespassing and other violation they both had. Why have a Planning Commission? We have tried to work with you, we've worked with you for five years, others for 20 years, and unfortunately, you could do something with a simple restriction on onsite parking and then have a max occupancy factor. I have given you
Thank you.
...a written statement, so you have it.
Thank you. Ms. Bachmann?
Hello. So when we're looking at the complaints, you can't really prove noise or excess people. Whenever we have anything in the neighborhood, by the time they come, if they can come, it's not there. So we need to really work on our ability to have these issues and get them corrected in general. Beachfront-only headquarters, I guess, is on Vine Street. It's weedy, they're letting their shrubs die, it's a horrible-looking building, the future Dollar Store, I guess. For all these rentals, you know, we're the hotel staff, we're the neighbors, we're the ones there, and I want neighbors I can know. Apparently, there's no one at 509 South Freeman for me to get to know. I know a lot of my neighbors. I walk down the street, I talk to them. I have a hard time getting from point A to point B because I stop and talk to everybody, and not having a reason to talk to someone. You can invest all this time, you get to know them, they're leaving the next day, you'll never see them again. That's not a neighborhood, it's not people that are helpful to me. Having someone there in a hosted unit is helpful. That's a neighbor. I can always have a neighbor. So I say we should support staff's recommendation as a stopgap, and we really need to get to 100% hosted STRs if we have any, and they should be all be hosted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Joel West, followed by Michelle Seer, followed by Amber Kay.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, I'm Joel West of Say South. The ordinance before you is a good first step, and I hope you'll pass it. However, there are two other issues I still think need to be addressed. The first is the issue of enforcement, whereas others have testified the existing regulations need work. As an example, in 2021, SB 60 allowed cities to charge $1,500, $3,000, or $5,000 for the first, second, and subsequent health and safety violations in STR, which would provide a stronger disincentive to bad behavior. Second, today's action does nothing for the coastal zone with less than 10% of the city's area, but 70% of the STRs. In 2019, there was a question about what the Coastal Commission would allow, but now we have citywide bans on new STRs in residential zones for coastal cities like Imperial Beach, Coronado, and Redondo Beach. Oceanside has a bigger problem with its beachery STRs than the rest of North County, because historically, our houses are cheaper than Carlsbad, Del Mar, or other beach cities. And thus, there's an incentive for bad actors to exploit our city rather than somewhere else. A 2021 academic study of LA County short-term rentals suggested that the biggest impact on housing costs is where the purchase prices are comparatively low, and thus, there's a higher proportion of STRs. The estimated STRs raised Venice home prices by more than 30%. Such higher prices will not only impact homebuyers, but also renters, as I was when I first moved to Oceanside in 1981 and rented just two blocks from where I live now. Thus, I ask the council to direct staff to further investigate these two issues, stronger enforcement of the existing ordinance, and meaningful restrictions on STRs in the coastal zone. Thank you.
Thank you.[895.00][895.00](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, honorable, good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez, council members. My name's Michelle Seer, I'm an Oceanside resident. I'm here to speak out in favor of this item 22, which is a good start to address this issue. In my opinion, short-term rentals really need to be limited, but in all zones. They're leading to increased gentrification of our community and tie-up housing that could be provided for those persons being forced out of their homes that they can no longer afford to reside in, which is many of my neighbors, in fact. Many of these short-term rentals are vacant for long periods of time. It's sad to see our city become one primarily for the wealthy, as seniors and low-income families are increasingly priced out of the market. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Amber Kay?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for your time tonight. I am here to speak in favor, but with conditions. We definitely, as our neighbors have been pointing out tonight, it is important that we have some restrictions on STRs moving forward, but there does need to be a very proactive move on our coastal zone. When I look at this map, I think, where are coastal locals? Where are future coastal locals? Because that looks like the entire coast is now meant for tourists only, and that takes away from our access to the beach, and it also takes away from neighbors and neighborhoods, as Joan was just speaking about. So the transit, what I'm hearing is that in staying in favor of the coastal zone, that we think transit occupancy taxes are more important than the taxes of our taxpaying citizens who stay here all year round, who live in our, who live in our neighborhoods, who send their children to our schools, and who frequent our restaurants every weekend, not just once every three years, or two years, or whatever it is that they come to town. So I would like to see you be more proactive in the coastal zone and make it owner-occupied only moving forward, and restrict all of these things moving forward for us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Peter Rodriguez, followed by Jenny Butler?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, I appreciate your time. I would like to point out that both Mr. West and Stensruth stand in tie, live in large properties with one or two people. So if we're considering, if we're concerned about housing density, a little bit hypocritical. I know that the business that the vacation rentals bring to the city, local businesses, restaurants, souvenir shops, are full of short-term rental. Yes, because there are more short-term rental rooms than both the Seabright and the Mission Pacific combined. You can't deny the tourism that's brought to the city. The idea that you would go against Planning Commission's recommendation is a little sill. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Butler? I don't see anyone rising. How about Mitch Silverstein?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Mitch Silverstein, speaking not as a lobbyist this time, but just as an Oceanside resident. So I kind of support this item on the basis that STRs take away existing housing and drive up rents for residents. I don't even think that's debatable anymore, regardless of political ideology. The city's well within its rights to make land use changes to protect its residents, but this item doesn't make sense if we're not addressing STRs in the coastal zone. As many others have said, that's where 70% of Oceanside's STRs are located, and with respect to the few people who actually live full-time at beachfront homes in South Pacific, that street is just miles of vacation rentals that are, and the city's constantly permitting additional bedrooms, remodels, garage expansions, you name it. It's ridiculous. I, for work, I monitor these homes at the Coastal Commission for beach access reasons, and I can tell you that the number of unpermitted developments that are not enforced by the city at these STRs is out of control. If code enforcement was out there prioritizing this and fining violations, I'm sure we could make up some of that $8 million in TOT revenue. It's really an unholy communion when the city reaps tax revenue from beachfront STRs that have giant rock seawalls that steal public beach space and beach access from our communities. We need city council to direct staff to push back. If not, Oceansiders will continue to be displaced while losing their beaches. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1163.65][1163.65](APPLAUSE). We have no other requests to speak, correct? Okay. So to the council. Councilmember Weiss?
I'd like to hear some of staff's comments in regards to the enforcement thing in particular, just to, because it seems a little contrary to what is in the staff report, and then I'll, I have a comment.
I'm sorry, the endorsements?
The enforcement.
Enforcements, I'm sorry. I'm like, what was that?
So Councilmember Weiss, specific to your question, what would you like us to explain about the statistics provided in the staff report?
Well, they seem a lot different than what some of the people have said are actually going on out there. So, I mean, are you comfortable with, I mean, do we have a reasonable reporting between the police and code, if you will? If police respond to a complaint, do they record it as a short-term rental complaint, or how does that work?
And I have a further follow-up on that after.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, I'm Darlene Contra, I'm Director of Development Services. Thanks for the question. Over the last couple weeks, staff has done an intense amount of research, working with finance, code enforcement, to really figure out what the actual numbers are in terms of identifying violations and TOT and whatnot. So I'm personally very confident in the numbers, and if needed, we can provide the backup data.
Okay, thank you. My comment, I have been and continue to be opposed to short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. My desire would be to prohibit all new non-hosted STR permits in all residential districts citywide, with the exception of the residential tourist section. That includes within the coastal zone. Mr. Madera, isn't a portion of the East Side neighborhood in the coastal zone?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss, yes, it is.
So I recognize that with what's in front of us tonight, we can't do that. So my motion would be to direct staff to, as expeditiously as possible, prepare whatever actions you need to take, that we would need to take, to ban all new non-hosted STRs in all residential districts in the city except for the RT zone.[1317.33][1317.33](APPLAUSE).
So would that be, excuse me, let me, let me just ask, so that would be moving staff's recommendation plus giving that direction?
Well, if they can do this fairly quickly, I don't know why we would need, because then we're going to adopt an ordinance, and we have to repeal the ordinance.
Can I ask, Mr. Mullin?
It's whatever the pleasure of the council is, it's really within your discretion. We could introduce it and adopt the prohibition. I don't believe there are any RT zones outside the coastal zone.
Correct.
So there wouldn't be, you wouldn't have to repeal it. We would just have to add to it to implement.
I just want to stop the bleeding and including the coastal zone.
Right, that would require an LCP amendment, right?
It will require an LCP amendment, it will require an amendment to Chapter 24, and to process that as an LCP amendment, just as we've done before. So we will require certification from the Coastal Commission.
How quickly can this all get done?
I mean, I think what the motion that Councilmember Weiss made could be done very quickly. There is a six-week notice requirement for a local coastal plan amendment, and a trip to the Planning Commission, and to here. So I think early spring, late winter, looking at the city planner to see if he thinks that's feasible. He said March, maybe late February.
Would the non-coastal area be done faster?
If you wanted to do the non-coastal area, you could introduce this, adopt it at the next meeting, and it would be effective 30 days thereafter. And then we could add to that, or we could do it all together if, which I think was
Because my concern is the pending ones. So I kind of, hold on. So would it be possible to move this staff's recommendation and then give that further direction, which is, as I'm hearing, as expeditiously as possible?
I mean, the only issue I have, it prohibits them in all zoning districts. My issue would be prohibiting them in all residential zoning districts.
As to the ordinance before you tonight, in Chapter 24, the language you're referencing is the section that says "all zoning districts." You'd want to amend that to be "all residential zoning districts."
Can we include an administrative pause on issuing new licenses, even though our ordinance are changed?
I don't believe so. There is case law from the 4th District, a case called Conway versus the City of Imperial Beach, that essentially holds that a use that is allowed under the certified local coastal program that is going to be disallowed would require a certification from the Coastal Commission. I think we could, if the concern is that there could be permits issued in zoning districts outside of the residential tourist district, when we bring this back to you, we could make it clear that any such permits would be terminated upon the certification of the LCP amendment. In other words, so property owners would know going into it that those permits are not renewable. And so that would effectively stop the bleeding.
Renewable, because they're done issue year by year.
Correct.
Okay, so, so anybody looking to put, add one after, say, even this evening?
When we come back.
When we come back.
Well, we could fix a date, but I think to be clean, when we have you pass on the local coastal plan amendment and the amendment to Chapter 24, if we, if we wanted to stop no new ones outside of the RT zone, then we could include that language.
Right. Okay, so back in 2019, I was, I was wanting to, for the council to consider a cap, and we, you know, I think at the time, it was maybe 600 at the time that we had, with a potential another 300 that were unregistered, so I had proposed a 900. We're far beyond that. I'm going to go ahead and second Peter's motion, and, because I really want to stop this now, especially in, for the record here, this, this came out of a housing workshop, because we are seeing, we are having a housing crisis. We have 1% of vacancy in rental. That is, I've never seen that in Oceanside, ever. This is, as someone, one of the speakers indicated, it is something that is definitely impacting, that's short-term vacation rentals, definitely impacting the housing availability. To see vacation rentals in the East Side, in Crown Heights, in the Valley, and, you know, other workforce housing, if you will, is causing us to have problems in terms of being able to have workforce housing for people who will work in the hotels, in the restaurants. This is about preserving housing, it's not about creating, because we have it. It is preserving workforce housing. So I'll go ahead and second that. Councilmember Robinson?
Might need a little more explanation of what Councilmember Weiss is proposing here, but there are a couple things that came up, I've heard, when this came out, that I heard, and I just want to address them. And the one thing, in the, in the definition of hosted, it says that it's the, and hopefully I get the language right, but the occupant or their tenant. And I think the tenant, for me, is a problematic thing, and I'm just going to, I don't know how it would work out or how we do it, but I would like that tenant language removed from the hosted, and it has to be occupant hosted. There were some other things that came up, people contacted about noticing, and a lot of folks didn't know we're talking, and I know there's no legal thing for us to notice people, but I think it's important that whatever we do, and when, when it's going to impact our short-term rental, our owners, or people with LISA, the permits, is that they do get notified that we, of what we're doing and how that impacts them, and I would just encourage staff to do that. And the last thing I just want to talk about is the enforcement. I think it's kind of important, and Mr. Contra, if you would, can you just explain how short-term rentals are, they're inspected? How many people do you have inspecting short-term rentals?
If I may, I'd like to ask our code enforcement manager, Kirk Munt, to explain the inspection process.
Yeah, he may know something about it, I don't know.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, Kirk Munt, Code Enforcement Division Manager. As far as the inspection process, the unhosted short-term rentals are inspected by both the fire department and code enforcement staff. We do have a pretty extensive checklist that focuses on safety, but also other items such as garage, parking, making sure that the parking is available onsite, other issues that lead to community, maintaining the community standards, and minimizing the negative impacts of the short-term rentals.
They're inspected annually?
Yes.
How does it How does a complaint process work? If there's a problem, a code enforcement issue with a complaint at night, when does code enforcement get out there and handle that?
Code enforcement works closely with OPD. We do monitor the addresses that are short-term rentals. OPD is aware of those, and they have those in their dispatch system. So, if a complaint is received by the Police Department, they have that as a premise, notice that it is a short-term rental property. And at the end of each month, any complaints at those short-term rental properties are sent back to code enforcement to follow up on. We follow up with citations by opening code enforcement cases, and we do keep in close contact with them. Whether every complaint is followed up in a short enough manner to confirm the violation is a different story. Obviously, police officers have a lot to do, so does code enforcement. If we have a complaint received in the middle of the night, they aren't able to get out there, and that complaint has stopped before the officers arrive, we may not be able to confirm it. But we do keep track of all those different complaints, and the ones that are confirmed, we do take enforcement action on.
But my guess is, there's a number of things that you're not able to, because you're not there at the time, or?
Correct. You know, as far as, I think one of them that comes up regularly is the occupancy. And the occupancy is something that we need to confirm. It's two persons per bedroom, plus two per unit. We're not going there at 11 o'clock at night to check how many people are sleeping in a short-term rental. That's not something that we can verify. But when we do get complaints about large parties, that would exceed the occupancy for that property, the 10 guests, daytime guests, plus the residents that are there, we can confirm it in that way. So, there are some things that we are more challenging to confirm, and some that are a little bit easier.
But if you had a complaint, you went in, and there was four beds in a bedroom, would you assume that they're sleeping more than two people per bedroom?
Yes.
Would that be a viable?
So, that's part of the inspection process, too. We do that with the initial inspection.
That's my, and how many people in your staff are dedicated to short-term rental inspections?
We have one officer that's completely dedicated to short-term rentals.
But all your code enforcement officers can handle complaints?
Yes, we can all handle those complaints. Typically, they're routed to that one officer, because he's most familiar with that process.
Yeah, and I bring that up, because I think it's important for people, it's very difficult sometimes, especially with the staff levels that we have, and doing this is, and the restriction of hours, is to catch or to enforce some of these things. But I do think very strict enforcement is important. I think, to the point, and I know we fine, and they pay fines and things like that, but I would just say, when we find things like changes in occupancy that are illegal, or construction that hasn't been permitted, I hope that we come down very hard on those individuals, and even including revocation of their permits. I think they have to follow the rules. And, well, I just say that, I don't think it really applies tonight, but, again, future to look at those things, and make sure that we are holding people accountable to what they say they're going to do. So, that's all I had for you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Deputy Mayor Keim?
I'll be quick. I agree with Councilmember Weiss about STRs and residential zones. So, I'm just going to address one issue of this that I did in 2019. And I see a lot of you in the audience that I've spent nights with, and talked about the enforcement, and what I wanted in 2019, and what I expected over the coming years. And I'll be honest, I'm disappointed. It was slow. I've gone out to your houses and met with you, and I've taken the heat for it, right? And so, and we anticipated this in 2019, and here's the problem, is a lot of these, and so, I don't care if you're in the RT zone, or in a single-family home, you shouldn't have a spring break, 100-person party house next to you with trash and vomit in the street. It just shouldn't happen anywhere. It doesn't happen at the Seabird, doesn't happen in Mission Pacific, it shouldn't happen in the RT or R1. And so, that was in 2019, that was something very important to me. And as a former police officer, I realized what the challenge was. You're going to have a beat cop at 12 at night, 1:00 in the morning, come out, he's going to tell a party to be quiet, and then he's going to leave, and that's it. And nothing's going to transfer over to code enforcement. And so, it's, and I don't know what we've done with that, and I'm not, I'm expecting after tonight. I mean, so, we, in 2019, I wanted to start slow and responsible, and start to really manage these complaints. And I asked for quarterly update on the violations. I didn't get a quarterly update, I got quarterly updated numbers. I wanted a holistic look at what we were actually giving warnings for, if we took any STR permits, and then if that was fixing the problem. It didn't happen. We had COVID and these other things, so there was some leeway. So, this is the challenge, though, is I wanted someone who is a bad operator, that has parties every weekend, to be penalized and have a short-term rental permit revoked. I think that would send a message. And then it helps everyone be better, it helps responsible owners operate. And that was my, the spirit of the law, when we put those STR regulations in. And the whole thing, you can't have a rule if you can't enforce it. And so, that's what we need going forward, is a premise warning in PD, where we could do a simple, we came out here at 10 o'clock at night, there are 50 people partying, and the computer, it says it's short-term rental, it automatically gets sent to code. We actually follow up with it, and we do it, because, again, nobody in the city deserves to have that next to them, week in and week out. And if there's operators doing it, I want to know about it, and I want to take action on it. And so, I mean, on top of that tonight, I hope that we get those, and we have, I want to look at a holistic, and this is what I've heard from a lot of people out there, what other cities have done, what's worked, what hasn't worked, where we actually stand with other coastal cities. I would like a deep dive, and a percentage of our coastal zone that's short-term rentals, is that normal up and down the coast? What have other cities done that have worked? What's been the most effective? What other cities have been happy with their process, and what haven't, and what we can make better? And that's, and that's a challenge. I was hoping it never got to this point, where we had to do this. I thought if we had managed these properly, we could have kept it, a reasonable number with responsible owners that didn't impact their neighborhoods. And from what we're hearing tonight, clearly that wasn't the case.
Councilmember Joyce?
Councilmember Weiss, can you restate your motion, just because I was running across the room when you said that, sorry. And I'm not going to amend it to add the ordinance tonight. So, the motion would be to direct staff as expeditiously as possible to prepare the necessary actions to ban all new, non-hosted STRs in all residential districts in the city, except for the RT zoning district. And then, introduce the ordinance with two small changes under 24.6C, that before the word "short-term," make it "non-hosted," short-term rentals located in any residential zoning district outside the coastal zone are prohibited. So, it would be add the word "residential," and add the word "non-hosted."
So, you changed it now to "non-hosted"?
It's the same as what I said, but I changed it in the ordinance, so we can adopt the ordinance, or introduce the ordinance tonight.
But you added the non, you added?
Non-hosted.
Got it. That was just now, though, right?
If they're hosted, people live there, and rent their room out.
Yeah, that doesn't bother me, that's the part where, and I think that we all got emails about corporate, kind of the larger ones that are doing 30, whatever. I'm sorry.
I don't mind. I think it's great. So, what does it mean for it to be hosted, for staff, or whoever wants to take on that question? I think there's like a common understanding of what it means to be hosted, but I just want to hear what it's defined within our?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, as it's currently defined in the ordinance, hosted could either be by the owner of the property, where that's their primary residence, or a tenant. And as I heard from Councilmember Robinson earlier, there may be some concern about that, and I would say, quite frankly, that staff would share that concern, to allow a tenant to be the responsible party, because they probably don't have the same, necessarily have the same stake and values that a homeowner living there would be.
So, the motion included the new definite, taking out tenant?
What sections add in? Because that's not, I don't have that here.
It's in the, that's in the definition of the word, a hosted unit. But we would have to, that's not before you, that section's not before you, so we'll have to bring that, if it's your desire.
That's fine by me.
With the LCP amendment.
Okay.
But in terms of, just so for clarity of the record, so the introduction of the ordinance, then, since, I want to interlineate that in the record right now. So, for 24.6, which is before you, we would add the word "non-hosted" under 24.6C before the word "short-term rentals," and then we would add the word "residential" between any end zoning district.
Correct.
Those are the only two changes that you requested.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay, so, if somebody has a hosted, they should only have one hosted, because it's at the primary residence? Do we have language within our, within our current ordinance that says it has to be their primary residence?
Yes, Councilmember Joyce, it says that the property owner must occupy the unit as their principal residence.
Right, and, go ahead.
No, if you have a question about this part, then that's fine, go ahead.
Yeah, no, because I know there have been issues about who is the owner? Is it an LLC, and therefore could be multiple people that are listed in the LLC? So, it has to be the owner, the one owner who, and as Councilmember Joyce has said, should be its, the primary residence. I believe that that needs to be added in, because we've actually had problems defining that in, say, Fire Mountain Corporate, whenever there's a corporate kind of situation.
In doing my own research, I found individuals that had several that were hosted. And so, that's something I think that needs to be clarified whenever anything goes back to us, because it flies in the face of our definition if they're hosting multiple, across the city, STRs. So, I'd request, do we have consensus to bring that back, too?
Yes.
Okay. Cool. All right. Unless staff has feedback on that? No? Okay. So, there's a couple of other things that I've heard from other jurisdictions that I would appreciate if we included in our ordinance. One is that listing sites require, that the listing sites have the license number, their STR license number, on the site, and then our ordinance provides a pathway to find the sites that do not comply with that requirement. Other cities have this within their STR ordinance. Is staff familiar with that provision of other cities' ordinances?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, I am familiar with that law in other cities, yes.
Okay. So, with council's permission, I would like to include that, because what you have is, then you have the sites take on some responsibility for not having fraudulent STRs in their accounts. And then we have some backup when it comes to making sure that we don't have people taking advantage of the system. So, we have concurrence?
Can I add for one thing?
Yeah.
This, my only concern with this up here is, this is us on a dais, or not professional planners. I expect this work to come from staff, though, and bring it back with these good recommendations. So, that's the problem, not to say that these ideas are not, I mean, I think those are very valid, but that's what I want, and when I come back a deep dive and say, these are the very effective measures we can take, we've done the research, we've looked, and then we have a time to read a staff report, instead of winging it up here and thinking we fixed it.
Well, yeah, we're not passing any of this tonight. So, I appreciate that. I just have done some research, and I would like to, just verification that staff understands that, and that they could bring something with that back.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, when we come back with the ordinance, we're certainly willing to look at best practices, and if there are things that, you know, we believe are worthy of consideration, we'll certainly share those with you.
Bottom line, I think there were several members from the public who indicated, look, you know, if it's hosted, and it's helping a family to, you know, meet, help make ends meet, and it's hosted, that's the situation that we were talking about, not a corporate, you know, several, owning several units and saying, oh, we're a host in each of these, because there are several members of the LLC. That is completely not what we want. No, we're banning hosted, I mean, not hosted. Additional? New ones? Yes.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
On Councilmember Joyce's last point, the notice that you're talking about, could you repeat what it is you wanted to say? Because we already do require noticing, we require contact information, the authorized agent for the property, the telephone number, the STR permit, among other things. It's in 24.6. I'm just trying to get at what additionally you want.
Require the websites to post that information within their listings?
Okay.
That's where?
Okay, I was speaking to the notice that's required to be posted on the property.
Correct. So, this is directly to Airbnb, VRBO, whatever else it is. They need to be aware that we are going to hold them accountable for posting what we require to be posted about these STRs. And from my understanding, that is a practice that is done in other cities.
Yeah, we do have agreements with all those hosting platforms. We'll have to see if that issue's addressed. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. From shallow research, it's not consistent. Okay, so, I'm really excited that council is moving forwards on this, especially comprehensively. In my own neighborhood, where I currently rent, a new house came up for sale earlier this year. It was sold for, I don't even want to say how much, a lot. And now it rents out for about $3,000 plus a week. And these are, you know, a family didn't get into that household for their first time home. My kids don't get to walk with that family that's not theirs' kids to school. It's really sad, and I'm just, I'm proud of the council for stepping up and taking action tonight. I appreciate that this is one, this doesn't solve it, this is one of the many-pronged approach that we are taking to addressing the housing affordability crisis. So, thank you all.
Thank you. And in addition, I understand that there are, we can now charge even more for violations. Mr. Mullin, how much more?
It's Government Code Section 36900 would allow us to amend our local ordinances to provide fines for violations of short-term rental regulations. A fine not to exceed 1,500 for a first violation, $3,000 for a second, $5,000 for a third. Those have to be directly related to a public health and safety impact, and they cannot be for failing to register. And there's some additional provisions we'd have to provide for economic hardships, but yes, they can, there's substantially more than the otherwise authorized fines that we have, 100, 250, 500, 1,000. So, we could bring that back with the LCP amendment to include in our Chapter 24.
Sounds good. And Councilmember Joyce?
I'm sorry, I forgot to ask this question. Do we revoke STR licenses for infractions that build up over time, or for folks that are flaunting our own rules?
Laws?
Councilmember Joyce, as written today, the Chapter 24 does have a provision to revoke STR permits for violations, multiple violations.
Have we?
I don't know that answer. Perhaps our code enforcement manager may know.
I believe the answer is no, right?
Right, the answer is no.
All right. So, definitely want to hear about the pathway, to make sure that that, folks know that that's a reality, not something that's on our paper, but that's something that we're willing to do. So, I agree with my colleagues who brought that forward, it's something that needs to be part of the next action.
Okay, no other lights, and I want to thank everyone for coming together and coming tonight, and basically understanding that the first step is to adopt what we have before us, and then this, the direction that the council has given, to move expeditiously forward to address the coastal zone, residential areas in the coastal zone. So, there is a motion in second. Please vote.
I need to title, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes.
This is the introduction of an ordinance of the, this is the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, amending Chapter 24 of the Oceanside City Code to preclude additional short-term rentals in all residential zoning districts outside the city's coastal zone, with the changes to subsection C that I read into the record earlier.
Please, and this is with the added direction, right, that you'll come back on the?
Yeah, I just need to title the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Hopefully, we'll be hearing as quickly as possible on that. All right. How many communications, how many communications from the public regarding items on the agenda?
We have 17 speakers.
17?
Correct. And this includes one group presentation.
What was that?
This includes one group presentation.
So, there's four for one? So there's four for one? That's 10 minutes?
That is correct. There's 13 in a group.
There's 13 in a group?
Yeah.
23 minutes. Okay, let's go ahead and get started.
Okay. How many minutes?
Two. We still have other items.
Our first speaker?
Our first speaker.
Rudy, Rudy left, but he just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Rudy. Happy Holidays, Happy New Year.
All right. Mike Tenover?
Sorry, couldn't wait.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, City Council, my name is Mike Tenover. I'm of 873 Walla Drive. I'm a survivor of the wall of fire last year. And first, I want to thank Oceanside Fire Department, of course, former Chief Robinson for saving our homes that day. It was a great day for the fire department. Since then, we started a fire safety, community fire safety group. And later on, we started to try to join the prestigious nationwide fireworks program. And last night, I got the certificate in the mail. We are the first community in Oceanside to join the nationwide fireworks program. It's a three-step process to join the program. First is a risk assessment, and Oceanside Fire Department helped us in all three of these steps, by the way. It's a complex process, and we'll go into the details here. One of the first things you do is you look at the CAL FIRE map. Here it is for the City of Oceanside. You'll notice there's one area in red there. Only one area in Oceanside is in the CAL FIRE, very high fire hazard severity zone, and that's our neighborhood. So we were shocked at this. Our homes weren't built to be wildfire safe. We weren't designed, landscaped, or anything. So that's fine. We put together a plan and, you know, we're going to, it's going to take a lot of work, but we have a three-year plan to do this. Second part of the process is we worked with CAL FIRE to decide on all the areas of nearby wildlife concern, mostly lots of vegetation. Third step of the process, though, is we're stumbling a little bit, and that's the exit, evacuation and emergency response vehicles. Our area is shown in red there again. That's the fire hazard zone. We have two small roads in and out of that area. Both of the roads go through the fire hazard zone. Kind of an interesting situation. So right now, we're working with ideas, to have ideas to try and resolve this issue, come up with a plan, and hoping to work forward with Oceanside Fire and Oceanside Police Department. This is a concern for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim Waite? All right, David Zernick?
I keep hearing there's a housing shortage from you. Honorable Mayor, I'm trying to construct a driveway for a manufactured home. My grading permit for this work expires tomorrow. I paid the city engineering division over $30,000 for this driveway construction permit. Please help and reach out to the city engineer. The city engineer will not speak with me, and I have upset the entire engineering division. You may be wondering how I upset them. I'll tell you. Mark McEwen was the owner of a vacant lot on 1177 Wisconsin Street. He hired me to be his engineer. I was told by the City of Oceanside Engineering Division that he needed a grading plan for his single-house project. I took exception to this request and presented detailed soils and geologic information and cited city code. The city still insisted that I prepare a grading plan for the owner. Then the owner hired a new geotechnical firm, GeoPacifica, to prepare a soils report. After that happened, the requirement for a grading plan was waived by the city. It seems the people that are running GeoPacifica and the people running the city engineering division are the same people, including Jim Knowlton and Chris Lilbeck at the time. This unequal treatment seemed wrong to me, so I reported it to the Board of Professional Engineers and Land Surveyors. The engineering division has a memory and has done everything in its power since then to hurt me and stop my project. They have been strict with me and delayed me all the way down the line. This expiration is happening because the engineering division, intentional efforts to delay the project. I have done, I have done the best that I can to comply with them. This includes a great deal of plan preparation work. The property has been surveyed many times, including preparation of a certificate of compliance, filing a record of survey with the county, providing construction staking and as-built mapping and certifications. With that all being done, I'm still being told by the engineering division that the property needs more surveying work. The city grading inspections have been out to the site continuously during the construction process. Many professionals have worked on the property and provided professional certifications.
Please complete your conversation.
I'm just wrapping up. This includes geologists, civil engineers, and surveyors. I have 30 years of engineering experience, and I have been given 100% best effort to achieve this goal. I've had, I have been...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Gene O'Neill?
Thank you. I'm Gene O'Neill, a resident of the airport community situated off Bennett Road north of San Luis Rey River. I'm reaching out to express my concerns and provide additional insights regarding the proposed Eddie Jones Warehouse Manufacturing and Distribution Facility project. The significance of Eddie Jones lies in the narrow alley, a few hundred yards long off Bennett Road, known as Eddie Jones Way. This alley is crucial as it grants access to a 31-acre parcel in the northwest corner of Oceanside Airport's runway. Two key players in this venture are RPG, a local Incinitas-based commercial real estate developer representing 10%, and Carlyle Group, a major investment services entity headquartered on Pennsylvania Avenue in Washington, DC, holding the remaining 90%. The Carlyle Group, with assets exceeding $382 billion, is focused on maximizing returns through the construction of mega warehouse manufacturing and distribution facility in Oceanside. While alternatives such as smaller structures or multiple buildings could mitigate truck traffic, RPG and the Carlyle Group are opting for a colossal facility featuring 114 semi-truck bays, 60 truck parking stalls, 590 car parking spaces, and a 566,000-square-foot distribution warehouse. I would like to draw your attention to the visual representation sourced directly from the developer's draft, the environmental impact report on page 89, labeled conceptual project simulation. The image depicts a facility from northwest, southeast corner. Note how many trucks and the sheer size of the facility. This depicts 14 trucks. I remind you that there are 114 truck bays. This thing's going to be huge. Wouldn't refer, that takes care of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Karen Salotto? Carol, Karen, now Carol McConnell?
Hi, yes, my name is Dr. Carol McConnell. I found that presentation very interesting, that 90% of the Eddie Jones project is coming from a multinational conglomerate out of Washington, DC. And I repeat that because I think that's really, really important for those of us who are here in Oceanside, to understand that this is big business coming in and building a massive warehouse in our neighborhood affecting the lives of Oceanside residents. I would also like to thank you for extending the draft EIR period of time for review. And in the air quality section of that draft EIR, I found it interesting that they cite the most susceptible individuals to pollutants in the area are children. And the draft EIR states in multiple places, including its appendix, that the individuals who are most susceptible physically or in proximity are the houses north of the river. I live north of the river, but that's not my concern. My concern is the number of people riding their bicycle along the recreation trail immediately adjacent to this 114-truck warehouse and to the children playing in the skate park 0.15 miles away from this construction. In the appendix on page 27, it discusses the exhaust from diesel engines of trucks is a complex mixture of gases, vapors, and particles, many of which are known carcinogens. It also describes the plume created from each individual truck can be as wide as 13.4 meters or 43 feet. If you add the cumulative impact of dozens of trucks creating those plumes of exhaust immediately adjacent to a recreational trail where our fellow citizens, families, and children are pedaling their bicycles, physiologically breathing deep, more air into their alveoli, we are causing pollutants to go deep into the lungs of our children of this community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Renata Engel?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Renata Engel, and I am the Oceanside Manufactured Housing Association Rep. for Cavalier. As many of you probably know, there was a two-alarm fire in the park last Saturday, December 16th, which resulted in one home being completely destroyed, another home being seriously damaged, two families being displaced, and two other homes being less damaged. The firefighter, the quick action by firefighters really did a lot to save the park. However, in order to access ocean, to access the park, they had to close Oceanside Boulevard and the entire park entrance. And that meant that residents were not able to exit or enter the park. And luckily, it was Saturday, so there wasn't commuter traffic, but there was a lot of cars that ended up kind of piled up at the front of the park. The park streets became congested. The rear entrance at Hillside Lane was not opened until almost 8:00 AM, so over 45 minutes. So I have been asked by residents to approach the council once again to see if anything can be done to have quicker access. I mean, it's not the job of first responders to worry about the back gate when they're dealing with a two-alarm fire in the front. And that caused, and could have, if it had been windy and it had been like a Lahaina situation, it could have really been catastrophic. So they asked me to come forward to speak to all of you at council once again and see if there's anything the city could do or find the way. I know the city public right-of-way abuts that property. And so whether that could be extended another 10 feet, that would, right then and there, that would completely fix the problem. But anyhow, I'm respectfully representing the residents of the park to see if something could be done to open up that access to Stewart and Laguna once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gosman, could you talk with her, with Ms. Engel? She, she... There he is. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Newton, this is your group presentation, so you have 10 minutes. And is your other group here?
Yes, and to identify the other members, the other speakers, Susan Custer, Sandra Martinez, and Marcy Farthing, so you can take them off the list.
Okay, thank you. You'll have 10 minutes.
Mayor Sanchez, members of the council, and the public, I'd like to speak about the mayor's actions during item 24 of the December 6 council meeting. That item was the flag policy proposal made by council members Robinson and Weiss. This was a common sense measure that simply stated that the city display only government flags with the sole exception of the POW flag to honor the sacrifices of our veterans for our nation. In any rational society, that should not be controversial. Rules and procedures matter and regulate these council meetings. They provide objective and equal treatment to participants in various situations. Council Policy Manual, item 100-52, states that the council shall follow the procedures listed in the Oceanside Municipal Code, Chapter 2, Article 1. Section 53 of that article states that the rules governing these meetings are in the order of precedence, the Brown Act, the Oceanside Municipal Code, and then Roberts Rules of Order. This is, after all, a formal process. Section 9 also specifies that the mayor is the presiding officer of these meetings. Any failures to observe the proper rules falls on Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, and there were plenty of violations throughout the entire meeting and too many to cite in this short speech. But formalities don't stop there. Oceanside's Code of Ethics and Conduct also applies. Policy purpose of that document specifies that those rules apply to the mayor and other officials. Section A specifies that such officials shall act in the public interest, comply with both the spirit and letter of the law and city policy, avoid the appearance of impropriety, respect processes and rules of order, and base decisions on merit and substance, not unrelated considerations. Beyond the council and the mayor, item 3F of the city's Ethics and Conduct Code specifies that the city attorney represents the city and not the elected officials. Further, the American Bar Association's Model Rules of Professional Responsibility state that it is a lawyer's duty to uphold the legal process. Such concerns are general. A document from the Institute for Local Government titled "A Summary on Ethics Laws" states that public officials must exercise their powers free from personal bias or beliefs. The mayor has a vote like any other council member, but should not use her authority to sway the outcome of our processes. I believe she did just that, however, and I am appalled at her actions. Such lubricity cannot go unchallenged. Discussion on item 24 was long and convoluted. It began at 5:28 PM, broke for the time certain items on the agenda at 6:00 PM, and resumed over four hours later. Those who would like to review this discussion may search the meeting on YouTube, starting on the video at 28 minutes and 30 seconds, then later resuming at the 4 hour and 40-minute mark. At 29 minutes and 4 seconds in the video, while speaking to Councilman Robinson and referring to co-sponsor, Councilman Weiss, Mayor Sanchez states in part that, quote, "Assuming we do have two council members, there would be a motion and a second. So if you would, Mr. Navarro," instructing Mr. Navarro to proceed, which he does. It should be noted that in other instances, she has accepted such inferences of a motion and a second. Here, she never gave Councilman Robinson an opportunity to respond, moving without pause to the city clerk Navarro. Indeed, section 2.128 prohibits members from interrupting and thus prevented Councilman Robinson from responding. Subsequent discussion ensues among the council members, at which point Councilmember Eric Joyce makes a motion. Councilman Robinson asks for a point of order. In other words, he registers an objection to the proceeding, which Mayor Sanchez ignores until after she has seconded Eric Joyce's motion. This motion, incidentally, essentially negates the proposed original, proposal's original intent. For unknown reasons, Mayor Sanchez anticipates that Councilman Robinson's objection is on the belief that he has already made a motion, even though he has yet to have made that statement. Very interesting. Funny how that works. Here is the dialogue, starting at 5 hours, 10 minutes, and 6 seconds in the video, when Mayor Sanchez ignores Councilman Robinson until after she has seconded Eric Joyce's motion. 5:10:06. Robinson, a point of order, Mayor. Sanchez, that's an amendment, and so there will be a second. There was no... Mullen, I don't think there was a motion. Robinson, a point of order, please. Sanchez, I don't think you made the motion. I don't think there was a motion. There was a second, excuse me. Robinson, when we started, Mayor, excuse me, when we started, you said that we put this item on the agenda, and because another council member, you said that's a second. That's why I didn't make the motion when we started. You stated that when we started. Sanchez, what I said was, I'm assuming there's going to be a motion and a second because two council members brought this forward. I didn't say there was a motion. You could have said the motion. Let's review what Mayor Sanchez actually said. Originally, in speaking to Councilman Robinson, who was one of two cosponsors on this item, Mayor Sanchez states in part that, quote, "Assuming we do have two council members, there would be a second and a motion. So if you would proceed, Mr. Navarro," I added the word proceed, and moved quickly on to Mr. Navarro's actions, denying Councilman Robinson the chance to speak. Compare that to what she just said to deny Council Robinson's motion five hours later. What I said is, I'm assuming there's going to be a motion and a second because two council members brought this forward. I didn't say there was a motion. You could have said the motion. We got time, let's review it again. First, she said, "Assuming we do have two council members, that would be a motion and a second. If you would, Mr. Navarro." Later, in denying Councilman Robinson's claim that he made a motion and that it was seconded, she said, "What I was saying is, I was assuming there would be a motion and a second because two council members brought this forward. I didn't say there was a motion. You could have said the motion." Discussion ensues between Mullen, Navarro, Sanchez, and Joyce, where they affirm Joyce's motion and deny the original motion by the two original cosponsors, thus negating the original proposal. Mayor Sanchez hijacked the original item, and therefore, she also hijacked the democratic process. As she stated emphatically, the rejection of the original proposal held great personal significance to her, and she is deeply biased on this issue. She thus violated Oceanside's Ethics Code. Such deceptiveness by Mayor Sanchez cannot go unchallenged. She frequently ignores the rules, but this goes beyond the pale. Oceanside's Code of Ethics and Conduct provides for sanctions against wrongdoers. Section C1 states that elected officials can be publicly censured for violation. I'm asking tonight for council members to move forward and publicly censure Mayor Sanchez for her deceptive, tyrannical, and undemocratic actions. I am also reminding the city attorney that his obligation is to the rule of law, and that includes Oceanside's ordinances and other rules in these council proceedings. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Nygaard?
Honorable Mayor and Council, you've addressed a lot of important issues for our community tonight, and I'm going to raise one more, and that's climate change. 2023, when it ends, will be the hottest year ever recorded on Earth. 2023, when it ends, will be the hottest year ever recorded on Earth. Scientists say it's possible to avoid the catastrophic impacts of climate change, but only if greenhouse gas emissions fall dramatically and immediately. And I'll repeat that, dramatically and immediately. Of course, this is a global issue, but we all expect our city council to do, our city to do its fair share to address these issues. We adopted our cap in May of 2019 that required annual progress reports. Those progress reports are the way that you and the public knows if we're actually implementing our plan as we are supposed to be. We've only had one of those annual reports in the last close to five, over five, four years. So we ask you, let's start 2024 with a new commitment to make this a serious issue, to get those reports on track for annual reports every year, and let's all hold ourselves accountable for doing what we can to address climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Kaye. Rosie Iguera. Wendy Bravo. Oh, is this Rosie Iguera?
All right, so I would like to talk about the policies and procedures for elected officials. The citizens and businesses of Oceanside are entitled to have fair, ethical, and accountable local government. To this end, the public shall have full confidence that their elected and appointed officials comply with both the letter and spirit of the laws and policies affecting the operations of government, are independent, impartial, and fair in their judgment and actions, use their public office for the public good, not for personal gain, and conduct public deliberations and processes openly, unless required by law, to be confidential in an atmosphere of respect and civility. So when the flag policy was brought before you, it's a no-brainer. This is our country. This is America. Patriots died for our freedoms. The flag stands for all of the ideals and principles of America. And I don't understand why Ryan Kime, it was such a difficult decision, why you guys deliberated until 11 o'clock and wasted people's precious time. It's a no-brainer. I don't understand why you opposed that vote, why the American flag should be the only flag that unifies, the only one that is flown at City Hall. I don't know, I don't understand why the pride flag came in. This is a small minority of people. It's very divisive, and I think it will actually incite hatred and violence against this group by excluding all other groups. You had many people come to you and ask you to uphold the American flag. You are all Americans, right? That we're one nation under God. I don't understand why that was such a difficult decision for all of you guys.
Thank you very much.
But you guys have lost a lot of our respect.
Wendy Bravo.
And our public trust, unfortunately. I hope that you.
Can you cut her?
Only displayed the American flag.
Zeb. Thank you. Wendy Bravo.
I hope I can do this. All right, so I'm an oblate of the Prince of Peace Abbey, have been for a few years. This is a beautiful scenic vista and visual resource for Oceanside, seen from the '76, and also commanding a great sweep of natural habitat of the, you know, it's really Oceanside's pride in a position of a contiguous natural environment for the multi-species corridor. Here is a, I don't know. That comes from Robert Damowski, who's senior planner here. And if you can come in a little closer, you'll see there's been an extension on the period we have for public commentary regarding the Eddie Jones Project and warehouse facility and distribution center. Yet, this is taken off the website, which shows December 9th as the last day of the review period. There are other documents here, but importantly, just notice the by the CEQA list, December.
11th.
As the state review period end, along with the time for public commentary. This is confusing and vexing, and we're wondering why we're seeing a difference in that. Some important letters, of course, are attached. The Department of Toxic Substances Control mentions construction scenario assumptions and a number of things that come into compliance in the DEI are. We're concerned about the number of people that may be looking at that December 9th deadline for remarks that maybe feel, oh, then it's passed. It has not. It's not due until the 29th, so how are protocols being observed here? Additionally, from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, some discussion of Oceanside's role in, you know, taking care of some of the things having to do with that. And then also, we have some other things pursuant to the Native American Heritage Commission and how the DEI. That's a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy holidays. Mr. Borrego, is there an answer to this, like in terms of?
As councilors are aware, yes, the deadline, the deadline for comment period was extended for the Eddie Jones DEI. We will certainly look to make sure that the notice is properly posted where it needs to be.
Thank you very much.
Eliminate those confusions.
Thank you. All right, now on to mayor and council member items. Item number 26 is my request, which is three, three parts. First, the, and this is my appointments, nominations regarding, first of all, the City Harbor CDC Boards, Commissions, and Committees. That is the first, basically, box there.
And Madam Mayor, we do have public on this item.
Okay. On, okay, so, so, so basically, it's that, and then the deputy mayor, and then the regional boards and committees. And I do note that there's another item, or Item 27, that is Deputy Mayor Kime and Councilmember Weiss's motion to make nominations to regional boards.
And we have public on that item as well.
Okay, so, let's just take both, let's just have comments on both of those together.
So our first speaker.
How many are there?
We have three on this current item, and then two on the next one.
Is there any?
Ms. Bravo is on both of them, and I'm not sure if Ms. Bachmann is. Ms. Bachmann is on the next item, so we'll call her up for this one as well.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Newton.
I think it was, yeah, go ahead.
Mayor Sanchez, members of the council and the public, please oppose Mayor Sanchez, Mayor Sanchez's nomination of Councilmember Eric Joyce to the position of deputy mayor. There are many good reasons to oppose his nomination. One, he did not win a majority of voters in his district, but won by default due to his split opposition, split opposition candidates. Two, he is an extremist, and his views do not align with most people in Oceanside. His support base is comprised of vocal special interests. Three, he lacks the requisite experience to hold such authority in decision-making capacity. Four, he is a newcomer to Oceanside from Virginia and was supported by the National Democratic machinery. This harms our community and sacrifices our interests for the national goals of the Democrat Party. Five, he was a school board member and took no effort to improve Oceanside's failing schools. Such a record of incompetence should not be promoted. Six, his views on matters before Sandag are alarming, and he aligns with the left to strip citizens of their right to travel freely. Please also oppose Mayor Sanchez's selections for the Sandag Board, Sandag Shoreline Preservation Committee, and the Washington DC Appropriations Visit Legislative Delegates. The mayor's selections give far too much power to the extremist and inexperienced Eric Joyce, who has received seven nominations more than any other council member. Please support Deputy Mayor Kime's suggested nominations for these positions. Thank you.
Wendy Bravo, followed by Sandra Martinez. Followed by, I think, Joan Bachmann.
It's my humble opinion that an annual review and appointments of council members to boards, members, and commissions, and committees is the purview of Mayor Sanchez. And I can't say that I could oppose that for any reason. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Wendy. Sandra Martinez, followed by Joan Bachmann.
Hello, mayor and council members. I wanted to talk about Mr. Joyce's nominations, primarily for deputy mayor, Sandag, and as a DC representative. As Mr. Newton mentioned, Mr. Joyce is very new to this, and those are very, very important positions. So I do feel someone with a little more experience and seniority would be better suited to those situations, or to those committees or positions. Sandag is probably one of the most important positions we have in this county. Pretty much every, not every, but a good portion of the money that is spent in this county goes through Sandag first. And I'm sure most of you are aware, we have very little input at Sandag because it is now completely a population-based democratic voting system down there, where the ruling, if San Diego, and I believe it's a national city, if they vote something, then they, they win on that particular item issue. And we up here have typically and historically gotten very little money from Sandag to help us locally. So I think someone with more experience is very important in that position because Sandag does follow the climate, the county climate action plan, which is the, through the California Action Plan. Prior to that, the Southern California Association of Governments, California Action Plan, going all the way back to the C40, the ICLE, I-C-L-E-I, International Council for Local Government Initiative Association, in conjunction with the UN, the WEF, World Climate Action Summit, and the Green Climate Fund. That's basically where the money comes down, and everything that's spent has to abide by those rules. Currently, or last at the COP28 meeting, they said they would need $100 trillion to enact the Green Action Plan, the Climate Action Plan, of which they have no evidence or studies to show that anything that they have planned will actually provide any of the results they think they might possibly have. So in view of the amount of money that's being spent and the lack of knowledge of possible beneficial results, we know there will be some harms. I do feel it's really important that someone in that position, appointed to Sandag, be very experienced. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joan Bachmann.
Hello, mayor, council members. I came out tonight because I saw so many things on the agenda that gave me pause. And I can't believe tonight, I think I just heard someone say that elections don't matter. I just heard that. It seems that people are trying to go after other people on that and saying because of a split vote or something, it didn't matter. I will tell you, Mr. Joyce was duly elected in the correct way, and we do need to believe in our democracy. We need to believe in our rule of law, and we need to believe in the way the city's supposed to operate. I want to see agendas that say what it is, and you go through the process. I don't know what they were talking about, but one thing I have seen many times that, I don't know how it happens, but there's a majority here that seems to circumvent things, and I think tonight on this item and the next item, we're seeing that. They assume something that's a position they're only running for. They have not gotten there. Mr. Kime, you are not mayor, and I think this process should follow. It's the mayor's recommendations, and we should do that. You need to get the right people in the right positions. We have someone who apparently doesn't believe in science telling you how to handle climate change, and you have got to get the right people in there. And we're just a town, and we're not supposed to be an arm of the other issues. So please, look at people who are the best for the job, who will do the best job for the city. And I know I've been rejected for planning commission numerous times, but I don't think that was based on fact. I think that was based on agenda. And please, focus, and let's let the mayor do her job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll start off with the City Harbor CDC Advisory Group appointments. So my motion is to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Please, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. The next item is the deputy mayor. I'm putting forth Councilmember Joyce's name. Is there a second? I guess you're not going to second, okay?
If there's not a second.
All right. All right, and so if there is no second on that, I then make a motion for deputy mayor to be Councilmember Robinson. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion fails, 2-3. Kime, Robinson, Weiss, no.
Okay, I guess there will be, again, for the third year, no motion for deputy mayor. All right, next is regional boards and committees. I have put forth my own list per, per the city law. Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion fails, 2-3. Kime, Robinson, Weiss, no.
Okay, let's see. The next one is item number 27. Mr. Kime.
Thank you. I put a lot of thought into this, and I didn't change a lot of them, but I, there was some important posts, and I want to go into Sandag as one of them. We have a challenging situation at Sandag right now, where we are on the losing end of a weighted vote, or essentially, South. Southern County has, can direct all that money and recommend taxes and fees that impact the entire county and then the budget, or the actual projects go to the city of San Diego. Luckily, this year, we've had something called the Mileage Tax that's been proposed, that's supposed to charge every driver for mileage tax. I worked with the other mayors, and we were actually, I brought forward the motion to get the Mileage Tax removed from the 2021 plan and the 2025 plan. And down there, I'm going to continue to do that and make sure that we actually advocate for projects in Oceanside. And we got $10 million for our carpool lanes. We got $50 million added in for the amendments for the 78 I-5 interchange, and we're down there working hard. Right now, we're trying to get to the bottom of the 125 tolling, but it's a lot of work. I take it very seriously, and I'm looking forward to getting some things that our city really deserves. So I'm going to make a motion to approve these nominations.
Okay, is there a second? All right, no second yet. What I wanted, I'll give you a chance to speak, don't worry. I, I have been, okay, there's one person who commented, perhaps we should have someone on Sandag that has years of experience. Guess what? I have 24 years of experience. I actually have a really good relationship bipartisan, across the board, even in no-party preference, throughout the county. I, I would be able to do more than Councilmember Kime, who has done practically nothing at Sandag. And I have to say, that Mileage Tax was removed last year, not this year. It was removed last year, and so there have been several votes to basically recommit to that position. So I don't know why it keeps bringing that up because, you know, it hasn't happened. It's not going to happen. It was removed last year. And I have heard reports from mayors regarding the real disappointment of Councilmember Kime, that he rarely says anything and actually has been absent. So I do feel that I would be much better advocate, not only for the city of Oceanside, but for North County. So I am not going to be supporting that. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. I'll second with one change, and I'm sorry to get this a little late, but I would like to be the primary for. but I would like to be the primary for North County Transit. So basically swap with Councilmember Joyce, if you're okay with that. Oh, okay. Then I'll second it, if would that change.
Mr. Borrego, did you put your light on?
Sorry, it's me. I had to, I didn't realize this was switched. This is, this continues to be broken. This is completely not working.
Okay, so you called.
I tried to.
Okay.
I messed with the whole system.
I didn't see him looking at me.
Desperate for a mic that works.
Councilmember Joyce.
Give me one moment to reconnect my system here. These aren't entertaining.
Councilmember Joyce.
It takes a minute to load up.
Oh. Oh, you mean your mic's not working?
Right, that's why I had to reset it.
Just speaking to the last second change there, that would be removing me from North County Transit District Board to back to alternate. I'm just really disappointed to hear that. I've been at several North County Transit Boards, District Boards, to just observe as the alternate. I've spent a lot of time trying to get to know what they do. I've been actively involved. I've sat as the replacement for Councilmember Weiss twice now. I have relationships with the folks that are there. I'm extremely interested in this area. And so this change again would remove me as the primary from anything. As we know, the school committee does not meet unless there's a dire need. So I'm just expressing that this, I cannot now support these either as we're taking this partisan rule to just remove anyone from the other side, from an ability to have a positive impact on the work that matters. I'm really disappointed in this direction.
There are no other lights, and I believe there was a second, right?
Motion approved, 3-2. Sanchez, Joyce, no.
Okay, next is item number 28. It's a long, it's a long statement. I'll let you say it, Mr. Mellon.
We do have, we do have public on this item.
Why don't I go ahead and title it, and then we can avoid doing it later. So this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, amending Chapter 14(c) of the Oceanside City Code to establish revised inclusionary housing regulations. And as the council is aware, the staff report has a staff recommended option regarding the operative date of the proposed 20% requirement. But the text of the Chapter 14(c) is identical to what was otherwise introduced. So we'll need direction from you on that.
Okay, how many speakers?
13.
13? All right. I don't know, 13 times 2 is 26. How about, I don't know, one minute? About one minute, and if you need a little more, I'll work with you. But we've already discussed this, so let's start.
Our first speaker is Richard Newton, to be followed by Wendy Bravo, to be followed by Joan Bachmann.
Once again, we're going to be speaking as a group, four of us.
Did you get that?
Same people, sir?
Mayor Sanchez, members of the council and the public. I am going to begin by stating my conclusion and then back it up. This item, as written, is null and void. It must be pulled from the agenda. Rules and procedures matter in these council meetings. They provide equal and objective treatment to participants in various situations. Council Policy Manual 100-52 states the council shall follow the procedures listed in the Oceanside Municipal Code, Chapter 2, Article 1. I know this sounds familiar. There's a reason for that. Seems like the rules aren't being followed. Section 53 of that article states that the rules governing these meetings are in order of precedence the Brown Act, the Oceanside Municipal Code, and then Roberts Rules of Order. That is, after all, this is, after all, a formal process. Section 9 also specifies that the mayor is the presiding officer in these meetings. Any failures to observe the proper rules fall on Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, and there were plenty of violations throughout the entire meeting and too many to cite in this short speech. Originally appearing as item 21 on the December 6, 2023 council meeting, its main point was raising affordable units from 10% to 15% of developments across most of the city, as well as a few other miscellaneous points. For those who did not see it, council meetings are on YouTube, and this item opened on the video at 3 hours and 21 minutes. After public comment, discussion ensued among the council members for about 20 minutes, ending with a vote at 4 hours and 14 minutes. The item failed 2 to 3, and Mayor Sanchez was on the losing side. Mayor Sanchez then did something that I have never seen before and was highly inappropriate. She ordered a break. Upon returning, she stated that she was advised that she can go back because she hadn't called the next item. In other words, she admitted talking about the item "out of view of the public," a potential Brown Act violation. To take a break in the middle of an item, especially when on the losing side, gives a strong appearance of impropriety and damages public trust in violation of the City's Ethics Code. Discussion resumes, and the terms of the proposal change. Councilman Weiss offers a motion that raises the threshold for low-income units from 3 to 10, and the percentage increases in affordable units and developments would be raised to 15%, only in the smart, sustainable corridors and not the majority of the city. At 4 hours and 17 minutes, Councilman Keim seconds this motion, but Mayor Sanchez does not acknowledge it. Section 2.1.44(a) of the Oceanside Municipal Code states that a motion is a formal statement. That means the rules matter. Subsection D states that, once seconded, a motion shall be restated by the presiding officer before a vote. Mayor Sanchez failed to do this. All on video. More discussion occurs, and at 4 hours and 27 minutes, Councilman Joyce offers a modification that Councilman Weiss accepts. Mayor Sanchez then says there is a motion and a second. A vote is taken, and the proposal passed 5-0. Discussion closes at 4 hours and 28 minutes on the video. As we saw with the other items, frequently, there's a great deal of dialogue between the motion and a second and the actual vote. That just happened tonight on item 21. I saw that it was seconded at about 9:10, and it wasn't voted on until, I'm sorry, 8:10, until about 8:35. So here, it is worth noting that Section 2.1.44, subsection E, states that a motion, once before the council, may not be withdrawn by the maker without the consent of the second. Councilman Keim never rescinded his second, and therefore, what was voted on and what passed 5-0 was Councilman Weiss's proposed second, proposal, seconded by Councilman Keim at 4 hours and 17 minutes. That is, raising the threshold from 3 to 10 units and increasing to only 15% affordable units in the smart, sustainable corridor, not the suggestion by Councilman Joyce that raised the latter to 20%. The motion before the council today is not the correct one. It is null and void and must be rewritten at 15% instead of 20%. These are not small oversights by Mayor Sanchez, but blatant violations and a willful disregard for the rules and norms. I am appalled at her actions to call a break during an active item. Such lubricity cannot go unchallenged. She absolutely violated Oceanside's Code of Ethics and Conduct. Section A specifies that officials shall avoid the appearance of impropriety and respect process and rules of order. Oceanside's Code of Ethics and Conduct provides for sanctions against wrongdoers. Section C-1 states that elected officials can be publicly censured for violations. I am asking tonight the council members to move forward and publicly censor Mayor Sanchez for her deceptive and undemocratic action. Item 3 of the City's Ethics Codes and Conduct specify the city attorney represents the city and not the elected officials. Further, the American Bar Association Model Rules of Professional Responsibility state that it is a lawyer's duty to uphold the legal process. Section 2.144 is part of the municipal code, and it is part of the legal process. I expect section code, set code section 2.144 to be enforced. I also note here that the minutes of the December 6 meeting are incorrect as they describe item 21 from that meeting as raising the threshold from 10% to 20% instead of 15%. As I said at the beginning of this, this item is null and void, and Mayor Sanchez is solely to blame for the management of these proceedings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Wendy Bravo, followed by Joan Bachmann.
Esteemed members of City Council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am not going to play lawyer from here. The only thing I can see wrong with this is that it should be raised to about 35 or 40%. And, you know, I'm all for it because we don't have enough housing for the poor in this town. And we need, and I'm using the word "poor." It's not like low, 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 low income, but we know what I'm talking about, you know, as opposed to affordable housing. So I'm in support of this, and like I said, too bad it's not more of a percentage.
Thank you, Joan Bachmann, followed by?
Okay, so this is one of the main reasons I came out tonight. I've noticed a process, the way that some things happen, similar to the guy just doing a bunch of statistics and long numbers and stuff, and you're supposed to be impressed by that. That is a script. It's something someone does, or an MO. What I've noticed is we've had repeatedly, where specifically Mr. Weiss has brought up something unrelated to an item that has come before you, that was ready to go, had been thought through, had been discussed, and adds in something else. This happened with the multiple species conservation program. So he decided to delay it and add it into something else. The effect of that is we now must have an endowment in perpetuity to do restoration. Okay, now we have another thing where it comes up. It's now going to possibly delay the smart and sustainable corridor program. And the staff report says that there are many issues with what was proposed. So this needs to stop. So is it going to delay the smart and sustainable corridor plan? Does anyone even know that because no one looked into it? And does it affect our density? We're not going to get any affordable housing.
Thank you very much. Ron Dwyer-Voss, followed by Shelley Parker.
Mayor Sanchez and council members, my name is Ron Dwyer-Voss. I'm a resident and a member of the Housing Commission and a member of Oceanside Sanctuary Church. We had a few more people here who had to leave. They're just older and couldn't wait. I'm wondering if I can have a couple of minutes of their time as well.
No, but I'll work with you on your time.
All right, then I'll just go straight to the point. Deputy Mayor Keim, you said the challenge is to put density where it belongs, a thoughtful move in trying to get affordable housing in the right places. Your statement with the support from Councilmembers Weiss and Robinson raised the questions of what you mean. Where does affordable housing belong? What do you mean by "belong" in relation to affordability? If you pass a good inclusionary policy, which all research says works when they are citywide, not when they're segregated, the only thing different about an affordable unit and a market rate unit is that the income of the people who reside within the unit. The difference is the people. Therefore, the policy as proposed is saying certain people don't belong in certain parts of Oceanside.
Go ahead.
This so-called targeted approach is not new or innovative or thoughtful. Rather, it is the continuation of a long history in this country of using technical and zoning planning arguments to segregate communities by income and race. I don't know if that was your intention, but it will be the effect of this policy, assuming it can ever go into effect once safe corridors are established. Don't take us back to the 1950s with the misguided idea that some people don't belong in some places. No good can come of that. The research is clear. Inclusionary is meant to be citywide. If your intent was to sabotage it, you have a proposal to do it. The Housing Commission recommended 15% with 20% based on an economic study based on the research. Don't take us back. Stand for Oceanside residents and not for the developers.
Thank you. Shelley Parker, followed by Brent Tanner.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Shelley Parker, Rancho San Luis Rey. I also am part of the Housing Commission. I would like to remind you that there was a study asked to be done and paid for by the city a couple of years ago in the amount of $70,000 plus that recommended that this, that the in-lugababy be raised to 20%. No stipulation as to where it should be. It should be citywide. It was rejected by the council twice. It came before the Housing Commission, and it was recommended that the 20%, it should be at least 20%. I don't understand why we have written this ordinance when we can see by the numbers here that we are failing miserably for inclusionary housing. And we are mandated by the state for us to build. Commissioner Weiss, at a meeting, was frustrated and did not want people to come forward and talk about housing that we could not do anything about because we're mandated to build. So we need to build all kinds of housing, all through the city, and please do not raise the minimum from 3 to 10. You are diluting what it is, the intent and the spirit of this law and the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brent Tanner, to be followed by Chris Kate.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name is Chris Kate. I'm here on behalf of the Building Industry Association of San Diego. I stated at the previous hearing that we believe it's extremely important to fully understand the impacts of housing-related policy decisions. The amendments put forward by staff in Section 5 that propose ordinance do just that, and it's imperative that it's done. According to a just-released report from the Turner Center for Housing Innovation at UC Berkeley, quote, "Policymakers at all levels of government should be cognizant of how requirements intersect with the math behind housing development and should proactively consider existing policy priorities in the context of the need to increase housing supply," end quote. The report ends with the statement, quote, "As local, regional, and state policymakers endeavor to increase housing supply and affordability, data-driven assessment is critical for a better understanding and evaluation of the potential outcomes of different policy choices," end quote. As you move forward with the study, we hope to work with staff and all of you to better understand both the inputs and the results of what KMA produces. Lastly, we look forward to working with city and all housing discussions, both at the affordable and market rate level. We stand ready to work with you. I wish you happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosie Higera. That's it?
So I'm not sure why on this item you guys conceded from 15% to 20%. I know that there is a lot of planning that they want to do here, the developers on Oceanside Boulevard, Plaza Boulevard, Mission Avenue. There's just no end. And the developers say, you know, let us know your feedback, but they don't listen. I've been trying to get ahold of Russ Cunningham to chat. He said we could chat, and he has ghosted me. So residents of Oceanside, call 760-435-3525 and let him know what you think. He is the principal planner for Oceanside. Also, I wanted to talk about acting in good faith as council members, as a mayor. I feel like we have lost a lot of trust in you guys. We have open borders and fentanyl, and it seems like you guys are okay with that. But you're not okay with protecting the citizens of Oceanside.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, that's it. And I have Councilmember Joyce.
Here we go again. It's really annoying. Oh, now it's back on.
That's working?
Yeah, I'll go back. I'll go back to my speaker. It went all gray. That's what I was doing.
That's what we're doing. Okay, thank you. Sorry for the delay. So the staff report includes a whole lot of information about why this is a difficult plan. It kind of throws together a bunch of stuff, including the last second changes up to 10 I'm worried that it does hurt the overall smart, sustainable corridors plan, because you're making these lots that are so specific that, you know, I don't want to see developers looking to just go right next door. And so I'm just, I'm really concerned about, about what is in front of us today. So I'd like to make a motion, and this is after talking with staff, this is after talking with, again, every single person who came forward to push for a higher citywide inclusion ordinance. My motion is that instead of the 10-20 split, we just do 15% citywide, and there's a reason for that. It's not something that's going to be auto-reviewed by HCD, and there's a good reason that they're not reviewing it, because moving from 10% to 15% is a moderate, modest step. Recognize statewide that it is not something they are worried about that hurting our, our stock of housing or the development of housing. HCD comes down like a hammer on things that they think are going to, are going to hurt our ability to build houses. They've said in state law that 15% does not qualify for that. I still have not heard a good reason not to do 15%. It does not impact density. Density is relative to the zoning. The zoning doesn't change. So my motion is 15% citywide to keep the rest the same.
Thank you, and I'm going to second that. I was going to also say that we did receive an email from Diane Nygaard the next day that basically chastised all of us and said, you know, 20% in a future sustainability quarters, how much more could you do to disincentivize anybody from building anything, right? So 15% is something that we had discussed. We, I actually thought we were going to be going in with a 5-0. I have to say, I was extremely surprised at what ended up happening at the last hearing that I gavelled and asked for a break was because I thought we were done, honestly. You know, I was told afterwards, oh, no, there's some other motions we can make. So I did return. I did ask, consult with our city attorney, say, well, can I go back to that? And I was told, yes, you can, because you haven't actually called the next item, basically. So bottom line is, I think that our original plan was a very good plan, and it's something that we ought to be able to do throughout the city. We have taken pains to talk about ensuring that it, that it looks, that whatever is affordable housing looks to be like anything else that is within that, that project, that community. So I felt, and I hope that we can, go back to what the original plan was. I know staff worked their asses off to get this to us as soon as possible, you know? I guess it's the hour that I feel like I can say that. But bottom line is, I did think that we were all on the same page. I was completely surprised, and I think I voted yes out of just sheer frustration, but really, truly, the email that we got the next day from, because I was still concerned about what had happened, from Diane Nygaard really kind of just said it all. It's like, we really need to stick to that original plan, going 20% in some future corridor definition that may, you know, that we can't say what it's really going to be. It's probably going to change several times by the time we get there. So Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. And if you hadn't seconded Councilmember Joyce's motion, I was going to. I think sometimes it all, well, since you said it's late hour, I'll just use this analogy. We're like a dog sometimes circling the fire hydrant, and we're trying to figure out which leg we're going to lift on.
Yes, it is the hour.
And I think when I heard about having the state get involved in this, this is the last thing I want. But I also think sometimes we sit up here and we talk about things like 15%, and we say, we make assumptions about building and that the developers and stuff, oh, you know, it's all good, they're going to keep building, but none of us take any of the risk. None of us build anything. The city doesn't build anything. We just make these assumptions. And so I'm going to support it, but I would say, I hope all of us, we watch what's going on in the city, we watch the development, and if there should be a slowdown in development, that we're big enough to admit that and then maybe make some changes later. But I, we're going to get to where we were going to get to anyway. So thank you.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yesterday, I met with the appellant of the Loma Alta, whatever project it is. It's on Loma Alta, between Canyon and Loma Alta. It is a density bonus project. They're at 11%. If they were at 15% instead of 18 units, they'd probably be at 23. The neighborhood is up in arms, and on January 10th, they're coming here. So if we go to 15%, my hope is that this council stands firm against those neighborhoods that sit there and say, instead of 10,000 square foot lots, you're providing a 2,500 square foot lot on a 3,500, I mean, a 2,500 square foot house on a 3,500 square foot lot, it's completely out of character with the neighborhood. That we stand firm, because in the past, when density bonus projects have come before us, with the exception of the last probably few months, they have not been met with unanimous support. And by going to 15%, we are going to be adding density into single-family neighborhoods. So just, just as a heads up, you're going to see, instead of the Cyclops Farms property, it'll be, instead of 19 units, it'll be 26. And the neighbors are not going to be pleased with that. And if you're comfortable with that decision and you can stand up here and tell the neighborhood no, then go for it.
Mr. Keim?
Those are also my thoughts. The last five years, some of the most frustrating items that come before us are when we pack more density into certain areas and we don't have a chance to change the project. And that's why I thought those were thoughtful changes, is we have these areas that could be 70, 90 density units an acre, and we can incentivize density there and keep some of our neighborhoods the way they've always been. And the reason I feel that's important is people choose to buy in neighborhoods for that, somebody might want to live downtown and be closer to amenities and closer to the beach. Someone might want to live in the suburbs. And that's why I think we have those different areas, and we have that ability to pick and choose where we want to live. And so I'd like to kind of keep that character in the city, and that's why I really thought the sustainable corridors is the right place to incentivize density.
Councilmember Joyce?
Just, just one more add after the comments. We are providing another out, too. So I think there's a chance, again, we have this threshold getting raised, that we'll have some smaller developments that won't do it at all. And, and ADUs are now replaceable for these units. Again, that's not something I love put it in there, but I think to get to 15%, I think it's worth it, citywide.
Mr. Mellon?
Mayor, I need to advise you, under our City Code 2.1.49, subsection C, we will, if this is your direction, to change this from 20 to 15, and assuming there's no other changes, we will need to reintroduce the ordinance. Our code and both the government code requires reintroduction for any change other than typographical changes after introduction, which is why I read them into the record the first time. But we can't do that now, so we'll have to agendize this should this motion pass.
Okay, so we would not be able to do this as an introduction. We'd have to notice it.
Exactly.
All right.
And it's a zoning, or a, Chapter 14(c) would have to be a public hearing for reintroduction.
Okay, Councilmember Joyce?
Can you fix the languages under the third and fourth parts of the ordinance? Would you go ahead with that or no? You want to do it all at one time?
Third and fourth parts.
The one about cleaning up the language of the distribution of units across the thing, the unchanged pieces?
We could go forward with that and just bring back the, the other change, but it might be easier to do it all as a package and...
Okay, that's fine. We'll just do it all at once.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Time no.
Thank you. We have come to adjournment for the last meeting of the year. I'm hoping, wishing everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year. Looking forward to seeing you next year. January 10th is our next meeting, so I'm hereby adjourning to that next meeting, January 10th, 3:30. Meeting adjourned. Again, happy holidays.